Just play along, just play along.
Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, November 9th, 2017. If we could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. I appreciate seeing your beautiful smiley faces out there in the audience. We do not have our student rep here this evening because I'm sure she's enjoying the longer awaited homecoming dance, which I know I had a couple of children in my own house getting ready for it, so I hope they have a great and safe time. Your children go?
Um, no, one, there was some sickness.
Oh, okay, keep them home. Michael needs to stay home.
They weren't looking forward to it. They would have gone if they could have.
Well, I hope everyone that goes has a great time. Is anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda? Okay, we're gonna move right along then. We're going to, um... A strategic plan, we wanna do that? I can't vote on anything, sorry, my fault.
Here, I told you, follow my cue.
Superintendent?
Everybody else, everybody else in the committee got it.
Well, I think you were the one who instructed us to do it. You're correct. Play along, play along, people.
Play along, play along.
So we will-
And what all that means is that we can't vote tonight because it wasn't posted. Posted.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's all we need.
Yes.
Just to be clear.
Yep, just to be clear. So the strategic plan update for 2016, 2017-
Posted properly.
Right.
Posted, it wasn't posted properly.
Do we, are we gonna have a, any presentation on this or just go through this?
We weren't gonna necessarily have a presentation if you went through it, but we're happy Jack's here, Colin's here.
Yep.
We can explain, you know, where we are.
Okay, can you just quickly remind me what SIP stands for?
improvement.
School improvement.
School improvement.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I know, we do have our alphabet soup in education.
Yes.
Yep.
So-
I like that we have a lot of greens.
We do have a lot of greens, and the yellows, as you can see, there's been a lot done with them. You know, I think sometimes we are our own worst enemies because when we write these one-year action steps, we really should write them so that they're achievable in one year. But sometimes when we say continue to implement, or, you know, sometimes an implementation takes more than one year, do you know what I mean?
Well, yeah.
So that, that sometimes happens, but for, for, for the way we look at it, it's a continuous improvement. So as long as we're doing something toward getting to the goal and we have a plan to know what we need to do next, that's how we're sort of looking at more like a sick, like a cycle.
Like for instance with Alice, we don't intend to implement Alice for one year. It's going to be many, but there will be continuous improvement and, you know, tweaks and-
Right, but if we write in the plan, train seventh grade students, then we know that that's achievable as opposed to, you know, implement Alice, right, which we know has multiple steps. I don't know why we have a blank little space there. So in focus area one, and Colin actually can help us with this if there's any questions, but, you know, we, we've really pretty much addressed those things on some level. When we get to focus area two, there were just a couple of things that we, we didn't get to. Colin, the curriculum review process for the PE department, I know Colin had, we all had great hope that last year we were gonna get to start a vertical team on that because we're trying to work on the strategic plan for the wellness policy constantly. So that is planned for, that'll be in the action steps for this year. One of the challenges has been getting, you know, participation from, because their schedules are very different than sort of the traditional-
The health and wellness.
And I think you had that same situation with health and wellness at, when you have after-school activities. This, this one, we're talking about a vertical team.
Okay.
Setting up a vertical team. So Colin uses sometimes during PD days, sometimes it's hard to find the, the professional development we do sometimes isn't as appropriate for the specialists if we're talking about, for example, a reading program or something like that. Something like Margaret's doing with PBIS is obviously very appropriate for everyone in the school, but sometimes some of the training in particular years, guided reading, for example, would be very specifically geared to a different audience. So, you know, there's opportunities sometimes on those PD days to, you know, bring that group together.
Don't use iPads in gym class.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little bit different, yeah, a little bit different. So that, that's a, that's gonna continue to be a goal. And then, um, Colin, in terms of the writing, the arts component, I know that was something that Julie had been working on, the interdisciplinary units. Was, was, what, what has been the discussion about that?
So that was difficult for the last year since when I was meeting with the middle school teams during their team time, arts teachers aren't a part of that team time, just because of the schedules, because when all the teachers have their common prep, the kids read specials, which means our teachers are obviously during, in instruction. So it hadn't been a focus of mine when we were looking at some of those interdisciplinary unit plans and doing the curriculum review. So we didn't get to it last year, but hopefully this year, especially now that we have middle school team leads that are back in the fold, they can, they can be a part of getting that arts component into those interdisciplinary units as well.
Colin, is there anything in focus area one and two that you wanna highlight that you're particularly pleased about, or?
Um, I don't think anything that would be of a surprise to the school committee. I'm certainly happy that we have a science curriculum and program that's up and running. We've launched a one-to-one program last year. A lot of the big-ticket items that are now green, I, I think, are what we're all really happy about, but we all have, you know, we all pitched in together to make those things happen.
Is it possible, on the one-to-one, is it possible, and it might be on the agenda at some point, just to get a, I'm, I'm gonna say a progress report, but like, how is it actually working in a classroom or a lesson, something just to see like, I know they're there, I know they're being used, but beyond that, like, what's going on?
Yeah.
So Barbie, we can add that to, we'll find a place for that in the topics that we've been discussing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions on focus area one or two?
Yeah, if I could just ask about, under focus area one, where it says the district will increase students' writing proficiency at all grade levels.
Yes.
So, oh, so it indicates that special education staff will continue to provide in-class support designed to target specific deficit areas in writing. So is that grades K to 12, or is that specific to Pembroke, or?
No, that, that happens within both buildings. In fact, in the middle school, all the English classes are co-tat at this point, that there's a special educator would write in the English classroom, be able to provide that support in those areas. And then there's individualized pieces to the students' IEPs where they would require services within the general education setting for writing. So that is happening across the board depending upon student needs.
Okay. So at the Pembroke, so it would be strict, so what's Pembroke doing in the English department? Like, do they have aid in each class, or is it just if that child in the class has an IEP specific to some writing issues?
And we try to look at placement at the beginning of the year so that if we see that there's three students in third grade that require that type of support to make sure that they're in the same class, so that the special educator would be in that room to provide that.
Okay. Okay.
The goal is to get as many of the services in the classroom integrated into the general curriculum. We've been talking about that with our plan.
Yes, yep.
But there are times when, depending on the specific needs of the student, that there is more of a pull-out model.
So there has been co-teaching done at Pembroke during ELA?
I, I wouldn't call it co-teaching. I would say that there, there's several times in ELA when there's a special educator in the room to provide support, but we haven't done any real training in co-teaching since I've been here. I'd love to.
Sounds like a strategic plan.
But at, but at one of the, but at one of the grade levels, didn't we do more of a consolidation and so that there could be more in-class support?
I think we worked really hard this year to be able to provide more support across the board. But, and part of the reason that we were able to do more of it at Pembroke was the addition of the special educator at grade levels so that for grades three through six, each of those grades just, they have one special educator per grade that's responsible for the kids within that grade level. So not having to cross grades is also an awful lot of-
Well, you remember that probably Cheryl, when you were in the classroom.
It was very difficult, so that's, that's really good.
Well, I'm happy about that because I know that we, is that many people raised that concern about people, about the kids, writing was not as, it, not as well as it could have been. I know in our MCAS scores several years ago, it was the same thing. So we had asked, I know, we had talked about it extensively, about getting kids more prepared to be able to, to write effectively.
And I think Colin, the curriculum, oh Margaret, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say Barbie, that, that actually is one of our goals for next year in our school improvement plan, is to write. So again, with so many other initiatives going on, writing has always kind of been on the back burner. We're working on it with the back burner, but this year we do wanna pull it to the front and focus across the content on the write.
Right, 'cause what grade is the long comp?
Well, it's not-
They don't have them anymore.
Okay.
We'll talk about that in a little bit.
Segue into that. Colin, though, I, I know that your vertical team has been working on writing.
Yeah, so that's, so to go along with the, with the school improvement goal, at Pembroke, the vertical team this year set a goal, actually Tuesday, to look at the new MCAS writing prompts now that they're released with sample student scores, look at those prompts, the MCAS rubrics, and our own school rubrics to make sure that we're setting the expectations where we need to so that when students take those assessments, or when they're ready to write for a class assignment, or move up to the, to the middle high school, they're, they've got the skills built in that they, that they need.
That's great.
Can I just ask in general, and maybe I'm, I wanna know more about the, the upper level grades. Is there, are, are we putting any more emphasis on grammar? I mean, I know in teaching of, of writing, you, you have to balance the, the content and developing the ideas and getting the, you know, teaching the kids to put their ideas down on paper and express themselves and all that stuff. And that's really, really important because they have to have the confidence to know that they, that their thinking processes are, are really right on target. But the, the mechanics of grammar, I feel like it's been kind of pushed to a back burner.
I, I don't think you're, you're alone in that thought because last year with the new MCAS, for the first time, conventions, usage, and grammar were on the writing rubrics for grades three through eight.
Yep.
So they are now a part of what students are assessed on, and I know that we are addressing that in the upper grades, Peter, you can talk a little bit more on that.
Yeah, I, I would disagree with you wholeheartedly in the high school.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I meant like kind of way back. I'm, I don't mean to point at anyone in particular in recent history.
No, I'm, I'm not, but it's, it's one of the things that really stuck out to me when I came here, and one of the major reasons why we do so well in our MCAS, in our SATs, and our AP scores, because we have always emphasized grammar.
We focus hard.
We actually, we, we do things a little differently than a lot of high schools where we actually still have those old grammar books, and that is part-
That's good, that's great.
-of the lessons that you can see in any one of our high school classes from any grade, and we also do the same with vocabulary. So we have done that for a long time, and I think that that's what makes us so special and gives us such great results.
It's very important, no, thank you, that's great to hear. I appreciate that. I, I didn't mean it to, you know, accuse him of-
No, I know, you, you, I, when you set up a grades, I was-
I was generalizing and wondering how that applies to this, the way we're teaching in this district, and you answered very nicely, so.
Yes, so, and I didn't think that's what it all, I was just, fine.
I know that was a very, and Hank Benucci was in charge of the department. He was very strong on that. That was really important. In the middle school, we bought the vocabulary books and, you know, so we've been trying to get those mechanics definitely back, you know.
Yeah, and we made sure when he left that that was a part that was gonna be carried on.
Good, great, thanks.
Yeah, I think the standards have moderated a little bit more, in a more balanced way now. Because, you know, I've been in education a long time, in the classroom, I mean, you went from, you know, very strict, you know, diagramming sentences to, oh, if you just write, it'll be just fine, journal, 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 and then, you know, there's all kinds of things in between. But I do think that the standards, you know, over time have moderated to, you know, practice.
We had been teaching the craft of writing.
Right, exactly.
And then with the standard shift, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was more writing in response to reading?
Yes.
Is that, and then it seems like it's shifting back a little bit more to the craft of writing.
To, to balance, yeah, a little balance.
Right, so, because they certainly have to respond to reading-
Of course they do.
-in writing, but-
Well, and, and the work we're doing through the standards work, you know, having the different kinds of writing, you know, making sure students know how to write a persuasive piece, or write a, what are the others? There's the narrative, opinion papers, so you know, there's a stru, there's a structure to how you, how you do that. So the days of just everybody gets their journal out in journals, or sits down and writes a composition on a topic, and that's all what writing includes, you know, it's, it's different now. There's just a lot of different, we're exposing kids to all kinds of different writing.
What about the grammar at Pembroke?
Well, I would say it was the, again, to Pam's point, several years ago, I don't think it was a focus, but I think it was three years ago, Julie DeRoche bought a grammar, grammar book, and so we are using that in instruction.
Well, and I know the younger grades are doing foundations-
Foundations, yep.
-which is more of a phonics, and then the upper grades are doing words their way.
And then, but there are also, and I, again, I'm not gonna be able to remember the name, but there is a grammar book, except for in sixth grade, that areas.
Okay.
Trying to make sure they have the fundamentals.
Exactly.
So what about focus area three? Did anybody have any questions?
I had a question on PBIS. I'm just gonna be acting crazy, PBIS at MHS. What is the plan, is, is PBIS, is the plan to bring PBIS over to the middle high school, or what's okay?
Might have a difference of opinion there.
Not my plan.
Well, it is a yellow and establish a training to introduce PBIS at the middle high school, is what I read.
So Jack, so why don't you speak to that?
And continuing to investigate for GMHS, did you see the?
Yeah. Do you work with, have you worked at all with Chris on that? Is, where?
Well, it's more with Peter.
Okay.
You know, as far as come to some type of agreement.
Ah, okay, so it's yellow because the discussion is occurring, but it's not yellow because anything's moved forward with it.
Okay, I guess then, then my question is the next step, establish a training to introduce PBIS at GMHS, sounds, sounds like it's happening, not discussing.
We haven't started the discussion yet. However, considering-
It's gonna be a very short discussion?
No, he's retired.
No, I'm not gonna be here.
That's right, that's right.
Okay.
I mean, so let's talk just for a minute about what would be, I, I guess, what's the need in terms of that at the middle high school? Is, is there a need at the middle school for PBIS, which is a very, you know, kind of a structured?
Well, you would have to believe in that philosophy.
Well, I don't know that you have to believe in the philosophy. You have to have a need and then see that this'll fit, this'll meet the need.
I mean, I think we're in agreement that there's certainly some cultural things and some behaviors that need to be addressed within the middle school.
Right.
Whether that's done through PBIS or some other program, I think is what really we can discuss.
But it's the, it's the notion that it's, they're, they're positive interventions, right? There's, so it's a, a way to try to motivate kids to do what you want them to do, right?
But wouldn't, so some of those, though, would be beneficial to more younger kids?
Yes.
I looked at PBIS more so in, in the Pembroke age kids. I didn't really look into it as to how it would, how it has worked with the middle high school kids.
Well, PBIS is really, in, in its whole, it's a tiered program for intervention. That, that's really what it is. It's how to provide support so that all students have access to social, emotional, behavioral well-being. So the, you know, the, our, our acknowledgement, that is an elementary model, but it's based on the tiered, tiered model, that, that really is the PBIS.
So if you think about it at the middle school, the way the programs are structured, right, so there's the, everybody's in the general curriculum, everybody's in the general classroom, but then for those students who need more structure or more support, there is a model where you have social, emotional teachers. That doesn't mean the kids are in those self-contained programs, but they may be getting social thinking, or they may be getting a period here or there. It's a place for them to be able to go and, and get, you know, some support or help, right? So it, I think that's kind of the tiered approach, right, is that everybody, it just doesn't go from, everybody does what everybody else does and then, or it's discipline, right? It's, there's a, there's, there's an understanding that there are some students who have more social, emotional needs, and so there needs to be other interventions other than just, you know, you go into the discipline track without any help.
I've actually worked with PBIS for almost 20 years now, and to me, the, the most important component of it is setting a common language for staff and kids. So that's what I think would be missing if we don't move something forward to middle high school where the students would be getting these expectations set across all environments at Pembroke. Staff's using common language to address those behaviors, and then when they get to the middle school, it's gonna be a completely different set of standards. That, that's where I think we could run into trouble at some point.
So a continuity of-
Right, of the same language and-
So, you know, more important than the rewards and those kinds of things, it's for, it's, you know, what their expectations are across all environments. One of the things you'll notice at Pembroke, when you walk up the stairwell, they have the expectations posted as to, you know, what, what does respect look like on the stairwell, and so on and so forth. So I think continuing with expectations similar to that when we get to the middle high school, whether it's done by a specific model of PBIS or not, I, I don't know how important that is, but I think the consistency of language is like, is really gonna make a difference for kids.
So then, so then when would that be discussed? Yeah, like introduced to, so with the yellow.
I mean, I can see that the ask would take a lot of time. I mean, there is only so much professional development time, but that will be done and over, well, not, you know, it's, I know it's an ongoing process, but the, the time put, focused on it will be, the NEAS is coming in March, so after March, there should be some-
Well, we can't put everything on hold because NEAS is here. I mean, what happens with the children that leave Pembroke, that go to the middle school, you know, and lose that language type and, so, that's right, so I'm just asking, so if that's, if that's a recommendation of our special ed director, when would that then move forward?
Honestly, I wouldn't expect that it's gonna happen until after NEAS for two reasons. One would be, I, I would expect NEAS is gonna make some recommendations in that area, and we'll want to take a look at that. And then second to that is, you know, you're right, that professional development until they leave, until NEAS leaves, is all based on-
NEAS, right. So we haven't really completely created the professional development calendar for next year, right? But it certainly, if that becomes a strategic action plan, we're not gonna talk about the action plans today because we're still working on those. We couldn't get everything tied up. But if it ends up being an action step for, for next year, right, then we have time to plan for it. I think, I think their point is it, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a district initiative, right, so it's gotta, we gotta put some, some energy behind it. You can't just put it down on the list and say, we're gonna do it. You gotta, you gotta know that it involves a lot. Cause I mean, thinking about PBIS, Margaret, in your school, I mean, you're implementing it this year, but you've been actually working on it.
It's probably been about a year and a half.
Yeah, they've been, they did the planning on it and brought people in to talk about it, and they went to conferences on it, and so I think, you know, it may not just be training initially, it may involve more planning and discussion, you know, and then, then a plan, a training year.
So then under 3A3, where it says in green, implement PBIS at the elementary school and continue to investigate for GMHS.
Yes.
Has there been investigation, though, into GMHS?
Well, I think that Jack and, the investigation's been between Jack and Peter, it sounds like.
But I don't know if, if Principal Lucia-
Supports it?
Support, well, actually, I, I know he, he just said he didn't. So, so I do know you don't.
I don't know if I, 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 I don't know that much about it, so, and what I know, I have a shallow understanding of it. So I really, I can't say that I wouldn't support, I would definitely not support that in a high school, and I don't know that it's an appropriate program that goes that high, but I would have to s, look up, look at it about, you know, in the middle school and, you know, how, how is it different? Because there, there has to be a system of increased accountability when you move up the ladder. So I don't, I don't know that much about it to see, you know, what it is, so.
I definitely agree with you on that point.
The, with the increased accountability?
Yes, yeah, at that, the high school level.
Appropriately, that's exactly what it does. By giving what the expectations are across all the different environments, you're setting up that accountability. You're expected to behave in this manner within each area of the building.
So the expectation levels theoretically would increase elementary to middle school. The expectations are higher.
Well, and the staff would work together to develop what those expectations are. That's the process that Pembroke's been going through for the past year.
Yeah, it's, it's not a program, so to speak, you know, it's a, it's a set of, it's a pr, set of principles that you, and then you can determine what, how you wanna implement them. Like, like Margaret will tell you, not everybody is implementing PBIS that she's aware of in other schools, just like her. She, she went and saw how others were doing it, but they made it their own at Pembroke. So it, it would be the, it's a framework. So it would be the same in, in the middle high school, if you went to the middle school. It would never, you would not want it to look exactly like it looked in the elementary school, but it's that common language. Right now, you know, maybe kids, you have a handbook, but the handbook maybe isn't operationalized for kids, you know what I mean? So I think it's, it's making the language more, more, what is it, more explicit, right?
So it would be age, grade, and culture appropriate. You'd have to work on making it that way.
So Jack, have you seen this carried through high school?
I have, actually, but when I worked on it in New Hampshire, we actually had a federal grant program for the entire state where schools could have applied, you got all the training for free. It was a pretty remarkable program. It was done through New Hampshire CBUS, which is the Center for Behavioral Interventions and Supports. So yeah, we, when I was at Wintasquon Regional School District, we did implement it pre-K through 12, and had brief success.
Jack will be key in the conversation.
He would, sure, yes.
So should that really be red, I guess?
Which one?
Introduce the MHS to the concepts of PBIS?
3A1.
Oh, 3A1.
Cause 3A3 is investigating, which maybe- 3A1, the second, you had the small yellow one?
So the small yellow one? It could be, you know. It isn't introduced to the whole school, it's introduced to the whole school through the principal. Okay, what else do you wanna talk about on this one? The red one that jumps out is the school van.
Which I would argue that could actually be green because you investigated it.
Yeah, it didn't happen, right? Well, that's true, but I guess-
You did the work.
We'd love to have, I just don't see it as a top priority.
Yeah, so you're right, that, we did investigate it. I mean, we've done, we've been investigating that for a while. That's one of the things Jack and I talked about shortly after he came, which was, you know, as a way to save money, right? You know, could we, could we control some of our own transportation costs and potentially offer an option to other districts to transport? You know, obviously the challenge with that is you, you have to do the insurance, you have to get the drivers, you know, it's, it's not, not as, not as easy as it would, would seem to be. But you're right, we did investigate it, that's a good point. I don't know that we went as far as, you know, getting very deeply into the cost of the vehicles and insurance. I think we just said, you know, it's just prohibitive, but I can make that green. So where are we now? Are you, are we still on three? Are you still checking three out, or are you moving on to four?
I'm good with three.
Okay, so the others-
Did I, in, I'm sorry, the last, the very last page of three?
Yeah, I know, I see that.
What is LBLD and SLD? In the two red boxes?
Language-based learning disability.
Wait, language-based learning disability, sorry, and speech, language disability. Okay.
Specific learning disability.
And that, that is definitely something that we, we talked about, we were hoping that we could get that um. That done, because a lot of times the teachers will have students in their classroom, and it's really just a matter of. Just presenting the information in a slightly different way, knowing that you have children in the classroom that have those kind of disabilities. You know, it's not necessarily rocket science, right, but there are strategies that are very helpful. When you know that there are certain needs in the classroom that you can accommodate for by maybe making something more visible or. Um, you know, maybe explaining the directions in different ways, or, you know, having more hands-on kind of opportunities, there's, you know, there's a lot of things you can do.
Well, some of that can be done through co-teaching.
That, exactly.
So how does that happen, like, say at the, at the high school level, when you have a child that does have a specific learning disability and then they go into. You know, a um. College prep class, and what is that general ed teacher? When and 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 how is that gen ed teacher explained how to accommodate this child with. A specific learning disability?
Well, the, you know, the accommodations um. Are are pretty much standard, most of them, and uh most of our teachers know how to do that. But if they don't, then they get help from the special educator.
Right, because it, so there's many different specific learning disabilities, and some are less common than others. So, say a child has a s- specific learning disability that isn't a common. Learning disability, and they go into their general ed class, so how much time is that general ed teacher given to. Recognize what needs to be done differently to teach the class, but also keep that child with the specific learning disability engaged and understanding?
Well, it's spelled out, and it's sp- the accommodation is spelled out in the I E P, and then again. They consult with the special ed department, and if it was something that needed special training, they would get special training.
Okay, so just.
But to give you an example, um, this is more of a physical disability. So what, we have teachers that have no experience with someone that's hearing impaired. And there's a, there's a system that we use, so there's some, some kids coming through that have that system. And we bring in um s- an expert from wherever we buy it from. And they would train the teacher on how to use it, so that would be a a not common accommodation, and that's how we would. Do it, and we, we could do the same thing for learning disabilities and things like that.
So, so, right, so that company would come in, and when is that done though, like, is? Not at PD, because it's not gonna, that.
Yeah, it depends, well, sometimes we, we get a sub for the teacher or.
Or do it right after school?
If there was special training, we'd send the person to it.
But is this some, and and maybe, is this something that they can learn in two hours after school, or?
Depends on, it depends on the technique.
Clearly, I mean, it, some of this seems like it's more technique and and training, not just a. Watch a webinar, I, I don't mean to put it that way, but like a, how to use a device versus a technique.
It, it depends, right?
I, I guess that, but it's a hard question to answer, with not knowing the specifics, so. It, because there's, there's um specific accommodations and and how to um, how to teach us accommodate. That accommodation, which I've explained how we do that, and then there are tools. For example, we, we're just getting into Mobi Max at the middle school right now, and we're training. The teachers how to use it, and that tool helps. Uh, everybody, but can, it can be a major uh learning tool for somebody that. Uh, that to how to reach that accommodation that someone may have.
At one point, we brought in Landmark, and we trained teachers in Landmark, so teachers, for example, could. If, if I had a student in my class who was a language-based learning disability kid, I might be able to suggest they use two column notes. Because that's a strategy that I might have been taught that would help students that are, I know are gonna struggle to just figure out, well, how do I? How do I get these things down in my notes, it's like, no, you know how to do it, put, get your two columns out, you know, put your notes in, so.
Yeah, when we, we, some of those things, we train the teachers that are gonna be teaching those kids specifically, and some of the things we. We offer up to the general faculty, so the thing that Carol was explaining to you. We use some faculty meetings and some PD days to train everybody in, in those languages.
We can't do everything on PD days, so we have to utilize time we have, like through c- community gatherings. Um, pet faculty meetings, grabbing people, you know, quickly after school, like Liz and and Sandra, they have time designated after school. To work with teachers who are interested in, you know, technology and.
Jack, what did you wanna add?
Jack is dying to say something over there.
Better be good.
You know, obviously, we have to speak in general, general al- general realities around this, so um. One of the things that I think is really important to remember is that the special educators are very well versed in the specific learning styles of the student.
Yeah.
And uh, almost every I E P that we have within the district, there's consultation that's provided between the. General educator and the special education teacher, so, you know, at, if I'm the language arts teacher in the high school, first off, I wanna make sure that I'm. Providing a very language-rich classroom, which I know that they all are providing that for students that might have language-based learning disabilities. And then they may be looking at, um, you know, for those students that are more auditory learners. They're gonna make sure that they have some lecture component, for students that are more visual learners, they're gonna make sure that they have things that are on the board and around in the classroom. For them to be able to access the curriculum in a different way, so it's really based upon what the students' disabilities are. Kids that are kinesthetic learners are gonna do more project-based work, maybe some online programs, things like that.
Right, well, I know on an, on in uh individual education plan, you have accommodations, I get that, and obviously, those accommodations have to be followed. But I think I was just going one step further into. In, in the plan, is, does it specifically say, this teacher is going to teach this child this way? Because this is this child's specific learning disability, so that's what I'm getting at, is, is. How, how is that, how do we know that that's being done? That that gen ed teacher is accommodating that specific learning disability? When they have eighteen kids without it and one with it?
It starts with assuming good intent, right, and, you know, we have expectations of teachers, we expect that they're gonna follow through with those expectations. We also have administration that's doing walkthroughs consistently throughout the classroom.
Right, but, but in order to.
But in order to follow through with expectations, they have to know what those expectations are, so that's what I'm getting at. How do they know what this specific learning disability child requires? And then how do they? It wouldn't be PD, I'm thinking, because it wouldn't take the whole staff, it would take just.
That's why it's done more through the consultative model, where, um, you know, we assess all students in order for them to become eligible for special ed. Those assessments provide us with a ton of information about student learning styles, so. The entire team for that child is involved in the review of those assessment results. The special educator obviously is the one that has the most expertise in that area, and that's why that person's providing consultation to the general education teacher. And saying, these are the things that need to happen for this child to be successful within your classroom, and those consultations tend to happen on a weekly basis.
Like during a, a prep time, or like?
Sometimes in the hallways, sometimes.
They're both free, or. The, the special ed teachers have more flexibility than regular ed teachers, so it's usually when the regular ed teacher is free. But sometimes before school, sometimes after school.
Lunchtime.
So I would hope, though, that what we're doing is if there is a child with a specific learning disability, that. The gen ed teacher and the special ed teacher sees that their grades are not.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
They're not as good as they have been in the past, that they would work together to figure out, okay, I'm doing this, are you doing this? And and try to figure out where the disconnect is.
Consultation in technique, and there's consultation with content. So a lot of times, the special educator is going to the content teacher, asking content questions. Uh, getting information on, on where the special, uh, the regular ed teacher feels. Uh, the student has a weakness in content, and what to emphasize, and uh, it really goes both ways. So, that's, it's been going on for a long time, that, that it's, I would say it's more than weekly.
But I agree with you, Barbie, so you're watching what the children are doing, right, you're seeing what the results are, right, if, if kids are failing or doing very poorly. Then that's gonna trigger, you know, a discussion about, well, what, what do we have to do differently, what we're doing might not be the right thing to do.
And I guess the point too is that the special educator has the expertise, and they are sharing those. Strategies, techniques with the content teacher.
Right, so the content teachers really look for that, I mean, I remember, I've sat in many meetings where the science teacher, I'm thinking about a science teacher at the middle school. Who was so excited to have the special educator, she said, I, you know, I know what I'm gonna do tomorrow, because she sat with me and, you know, she just really wasn't sure. What was gonna be the best thing for this child, so that whole collaboration, you know, that's one thing I, I do think in the, in the district that I've seen over time is. A lot more collaboration, like, not the shut your door, you know, I don't want anybody to know what I'm doing, or I have to know it all. You know, there's definitely more collaboration, even when I look at the mentor program and what Amanda does with instructional rounds for the year two teachers. I mean, the veteran teachers open their classrooms up, and kid, teachers come around with Amanda, looking for specific things that they wanna see, you know, so. Years ago, nobody would have opened their classrooms up, people, you know, so it, you know, I think that some of what you're talking about or worrying about. Is, I think, less of an issue now than it might have been years ago, because, you know, there is a more collaborative spirit.
Yeah, I, I've definitely witnessed uh them and, you know, them and us, like, they're the special ed teacher, we're the gen ed teacher, and there, there wasn't that.
Collaboration.
Coming together, it was more like.
This is me, this is you.
Yeah, and, and almost like, you know, don't tell me.
Yeah, exactly, right, right.
Well, I have a question then, so. In, say, a college prep level course, would there ever be a co-teaching model?
Right now, we're not doing co-teaching. That's, that's not to say we couldn't do it.
I guess I misunderstood.
But your level, but your level three classes are, are, are not really college prep, but those are not co-taught, but there's more support in those. They're supported, they have supported classes.
I misunderstood.
You don't really co-teach.
But supported could be with a para.
Could be a para, could be a teacher.
Right, so definitely different from co-teaching.
It depends, it, the level doesn't matter, because we have some special, some kids on I E Ps and on his classes.
Right.
So it, it's a matter of what the accommodation is.
The support, and, and when you see the results at the high school, cause Colin's gonna talk about those, you know, even when we look at the subgroups. The subgroups of kids at the high school do very well.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought somehow at the high school, some of that was happening, but.
Co-teaching, um, years ago, there was more of it, remember, when we, when we went to this model of more program-based. It, we had to use the resources in a different way, we just didn't have the luxury of doing co-talk classrooms, and then all of the. So, so we did do it a little bit differently.
We, we actually have, we had a, we have a couple co-talk classes in the middle school, because the special educator is. Really uh well-trained and, and good at it. Um, and I, 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 I think it's a good model, but it takes a lot of training. So you ha- you can't just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna co-teach next year, you have to train the special educators and the regular ed teachers on. How to do that.
Okay, so we do have it.
We, we have a little bit of it.
Not really, no, one, there's one special educator that does it in a math class.
Yeah, but it is something that we are talking about as a district, it's just a question of, it's a resource allocation as well.
Well, there's pros and cons to everything.
Everything, that's right, so, so what about area four? Anything in area four that you?
Are we gonna get the wellness committee back up and running, is Sean gonna be the?
Well, um, well, I had a conversation today with Colin and Sean, and they've agreed to sort of help with that. In organizing it, because two of the major, major areas of the wel- health and wellness, um, po- the, the plan. Our curriculum and the relationship to all of the programs that we're doing, and foods. So Pam has agreed that she would be the clerk, cause she takes amazing minutes. And um, so we're, we just had a conversation today about that, our goal would be to try to get a, I'm, I'm also reaching out to Mary Beth Doherty. To see, you know, kinda, cause she's been, she's been a, a major player, and she wants to continue to be. The other thing we talked about is that I think we all agree there's some gaps in some of the, um, some of the roles that people can play on that committee, like, for example. Um, we'd like to see um, or a counselor, or a health and, health and P E teachers. Um, right now, they're not represented on the wellness committee, so there's a, a few things that we, we wanna. Expand it a little bit, and plan, our planning, our plan would be to meet once before Christmas holiday, and then, you know, maybe three times after. And they'd come back, you know, at some point during the year and do a presentation for you on, you know, kind of. As we talked about today, the goal to me isn't to have a, a committee, sort of a standalone committee. So we've got the, the work we're doing with Georgetown Cares, which is merging the Substance Abuse Advisory Panel, right?
Yes, that's right.
And so the connection would be, that's the community coalition, and then the health and wellness is one piece. So if there's things that we wanna do in the Health and Wellness Committee, we don't usually have money, we might have money if we work with the coalition. So the goal is to create a stronger partnership around this whole issue of health and wellness. And Colin is, is, I said, you saw earlier in the plan, he's getting that, he's trying to get that health and, uh, that um, vertical team up. So that would be another, you know, sort of connecting piece, so that is the plan, very well said.
I had a question on four A four, which um. I guess with the previous, I, I hear good things, but I think one of, one of the challenges with the previous Food Services Director was. Getting the feedback, listening, listening to the customer, figuring out what they liked and didn't like, and, and.
Yes.
Evolving the system, and the red yellows and reds. Are the things that we all indicated were really important for making it. Progress as a department.
And that could be the work of a, of the health and wellness advisory.
Well, I mean, I guess part of this is, like, conduct a satisfaction survey for parents, staff, and students, that's not health and wellness, that's.
Well, no, this was all in relationship to uh the Meals Program, so Heather was, Heather was going to. Um, have a more formal program of gathering feedback from the customers, right? Um, so she did, remember she came, when she came and talked to you, she did say that she met, you know, with the, with the students. Not on a formal basis, she didn't have like a, like Sean and I chatted, um, about, talking about his goals. And um, he was talking about actually uh doing something where he have kids, you know, say, throw their name in a hat, say that they'd be interested, and then he. He'd period, he'd pull names from the hat and have lunch with them, and, and talk with them, so, cause the goal would be, instead of just having like a standard group, like a student council. You know, get a chance to talk to, to multiple kids, but she, but she did not have a formal process.
Right, I, I guess I'm, I am. And I know we're three months in, or whatever it's been, and, and there's a lot going on, I'd like to see that, I don't want that to get pushed to the side.
No, I, I, Sean's not here, but um, but he is, Sean is in the cafeterias all the time, Peter, can you and Margaret speak to that, I mean?
And, well, and I guess I'm, I'm, I'm gonna push back a little bit, because, again, the previous Food Services Director, I'm in there all the time, I talk to kids, I know what they want.
Just telling you.
Respectfully, but that's what we were told, and then the result was a very big disconnect between. What we were told and what we, and what we actually saw, and I just, I just wanna make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I would say to you that, I would say to you that Sean is very focused on that, and. Um, in fact, when we talked uh about a week and a half ago, um, we talked about exactly that, so, you know, what data are you collecting? And do you have, you know, do you have information, I mean, he's obviously talking to the kids and they're making adjustments. He knows that the Paninis, he's, he's tracking the, meets with Susanne, he's tracking the, you know, the um, people who are participating. People who are participating and spending and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
What is selling and.
What is selling and what isn't, but um in terms of talking to the customers, yeah, I definitely. He, that is a plan for him, but I will make sure that when we have him come, he'll have some data to share with you.
The Paninis are hot?
The Paninis are hot. I guess.
Flying off.
Are you asking hot, like warm or hot?
Popular.
Well, today, I actually saw at Pembroke, Sue in the cafeteria had a group of sixth graders. And she was meeting with them.
Yeah.
About, I was heading to the.
School aid.
Meeting, yeah.
Community gathering, so that was happening on a Pembroke basis.
So I agree, Michael, it needs to be formal because then you can use, as we're always talking about, use the data to then inform what you what you're doing next.
Well, it's been a couple of years that we were asking her to um talk to the kids.
Yeah, and I think she felt that she was talking to the kids, but it wasn't in any kind of real formal. Like if she talked to the kids, I don't know what data came out of it, I guess that's what.
And it doesn't need to be a formal, sit down, pick five kids out of a head, but it's, I'm gonna talk to ten kids a day and find out what they like and actually.
And write it down.
I think he does go through the calf and he does talk.
But Suzanne works with him, so.
Formal, it's more informal, but you know, I don't know if he's going back and writing it down.
Yeah.
It's a matter of compiling.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Are we?
He's, you know, he's new, so he's building relationships.
Right, no, for sure, and we're three months in and I'm I'm not.
No, no.
Not really related to this, but I would love to see participation.
Yes, we'll definitely get you that.
That will be next.
Participation by, I'm sorry.
In terms of food services.
Food service lunches.
Budget, participation.
Oh, participation with, yeah, yeah.
So when are we due to hear from Sean?
We haven't got that on the calendar yet, although we have that as our list of things to get on. Cause yeah, because I think he would be interested in coming before you and talking about where, you know, where things are. Early on, because we did talk about, we have to decide if we're gonna, we gotta start.
Like next month.
Yeah, exactly.
No pressure.
No pressure. Um and the other thing was just the youth risk behavior survey, but we, you know, we have a plan for that, so. And then five is technology and information management.
I remember when this was all red. Uh the one-to-one, so how is that going? How are we, how are we thinking that it's?
Well, Peter before, Peter before you. Before you leave, they just asked about, how do you feel the one-to-one is working so far?
Very well.
Any, any specific points?
Uh.
You might wanna.
I think we. It's great that everybody has it and and not everybody, the kids that do have it, um. The people that opted out, our system of we have enough iPads, they get them timely fashion every day. All of that's working well, um I'm seeing some really cool things in classes. Um uh and I expect that to really spread as uh we get uh. More used to it and our, we have, we have two integration specialists starting this week, so. That's, that's helping out, um the only uh. Little uh bump, I think, is with our network uh right now, our wireless network because. Um it has to be tweaked because the, the um. I think we may have gone a little bit overboard with the wireless AP, so. Um if you're in a room and you hook your, your uh device hooks up to the AP there. Uh the signal's so strong, you you walk into like five rooms down and you're still connected to that one and it's. Really slow and you don't get on, so so Ben's working with that and trying to kinda turn them down.
Right.
To uh a point where when you walk out of the room, you'll drop it. But then when you get into some common areas, you you have issues, so um.
But we haven't had any problem with kids getting on and.
No, that that's about the only problem, so um I I think that we. Uh did, everyone did a great job planning this and learning from other districts. And uh that we benefit from that, and so we've had, we've had very few bumps, so it's, it's gone pretty well. And just the, as you guys know, that um. Parents wanted to pay for that uh upfront, so we, when we started to talk about this, we worried about, you know. What if we don't have a the money to pay the lease program and and that really wasn't a concern because almost. Almost everybody paid in one payment and the ones that didn't paid in two, pretty much.
But we do have to, we were talking about this, we do have to start thinking about, you know, every year, giving people enough time in advance to. You know, know what's coming and.
I guess what what we didn't anticipate was where the kids that that were here last year, we didn't think about the the choice kids and the kids moving into the district. And how we could take care of them, so uh that's something that we should.
Right, cause we had already ordered, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't wanna over order, cause then we're stuck with the bill for iPads that are not.
Right, and there was a deadline where they had to get onto the lease program too, they couldn't just hop on later on.
Right. What is our, and I know we, I know we talked about this during the, during the planning part, but I don't. Quite know what the, what the, the answer was, what are we doing to assess the, 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 the program as a whole in terms of? And I don't wanna say it's another data point, but you know, how are we measuring that it's, that it's good? And that it's accomplishing what we're doing instead of, hey, kids are using iPads, great, there's a, there's a value to that, but actually furthering is not just.
Does it increase learning?
And how are we?
Yeah.
How are we measuring the, how are we measuring that? I'll just leave it open.
Well, we're not yet, but we, there's some tools out there that we're, we're gonna look at and um. That's something that, that's a question that everyone in the world is wrestling with.
Right.
So.
I think we have to identify what, what those goals are and then how will you know, right, I mean? Yeah.
I'm, I'm, and and I guess that's kind of where I'm, 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 I'm leading you down a path of when, when are we going to start figuring out? Our flavor and.
So we've got some of those kind of learning expectation goals and what we know that a one-to-one program can do and we would like it to do with our, with our students, with our teachers. Um and we will certainly develop some tools to try to assess that, it is kind of a, it's difficult because it's not a. You sit down and take your one-to-one test and then you get your data.
Right, right.
It's a little harder, but what we can do is now that we have both integration specialists, you know, I'm planning on meeting with them and keeping logs of who they're meeting with.
Who they're meeting with.
What they're, what topics are coming up most frequently, what they are, you know, pushing out and what they're kind of instructing for teachers that. Want to know more, and then we can look at those logs and see what the production of some of the student work is.
Mm-hmm.
Um to see whether or not that's lining up with our stated goals.
Cause I guess how do we measure the, again, is it, is it improving student learning, the? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick social studies, not for any reason, but you know what? It's not, it's not adding enough value, yes, they're using the device in social studies, but it's not adding enough value. So maybe it's, you know, de-emphasize, it's, it's available in social studies, but you know what, it's really not a big focus and we're not. Pushing those teachers to use it, or we're killing it in math, how do we grow it on the math side? Cause it's not gonna work perfectly in every setting, in every classroom, in every lesson, in every unit.
Right.
How do we identify?
Want it to.
And we don't want it to, for sure, but how are we, I, I, it's wonderful that the teachers can reach out to, to the um. Integration specialists, but I guess my question is, now that we're starting to see that in reality, how are we then? Taking that and then building a better program?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know if you could do anything, you couldn't track student grades and say the grades are better because the kids are on technology.
No.
You know, you could assess the kids' perceptions of how it's changed their, you know, their experience, I guess.
I, I think what's very obvious is the level of student engagement, all, all student engagement. What I mean by that is when I go into a class, rather than just seeing, you know, seventy percent of the kids really paying attention.
Taking notes.
anticipating, you, there's a lot more active learning where all of the kids in the room are engaged in the lesson. So there's so many different ways to look at it, but we also can't lose uh sight of the fact that it fills a technology void for us. Because we have mandated testing that we, uh we would never be able to do that if, you know. We were talking about that at budget time and we need six hundred and forty computers for the middle high school.
Right, no, agreed.
So it, it's more, it's more than learning, I guess, it's, it's, there's also this, you know, technology void that we've had that it's, that's filled. It's, there's a lot of benefits, I think, and we have to look at all of them.
So I think we have to decide, what are we trying to measure, right?
Right.
Because not everything needs to be measured, right, the, the ki- the, the kids need to have exposure in the twenty-first century to being able to use. Technology as a tool for learning and working, right? But what specifically are we trying to find out, right, what do we wanna look at? And I think student engagement is one thing, definitely, that you, you can, you can assess that. And I think the perception of students as to, you know, and and even teachers, how has this changed your teaching? You know, but sometimes it's hard to be as quantitative as it is to be more qualitative in terms of how you can assess this, assess that. It's not really about assessing satisfaction.
Yeah, no, I mean, there is a level of that since we are telling people to go buy a, a device, they need to be satisfied with it, but no, I, I.
You know what I mean?
I agree, I just fear the anecdotal, I walked into this classroom and it was great, as a measure of success. In a, you know, in, in a school of seven hundred kids and.
But I guess I look at it, you know, I, I certainly think we should be measuring some things. But I also think that, you know, there, we, teachers use all kinds of techniques in their classroom, we don't assess. You know, the effectiveness of an individual technique that a teacher's using on any given day, but, you know, so what makes technology different? To me, it's like, that's a tool.
For sure, but it's a tool with a big cost. And we need to, but we need to make sure that three years from now, when we're looking at, at spending all the money on the network and and on all these programs, that it's worth. Continuing.
Yeah.
Cause there is a significant investment behind this.
Yep.
Well, and I think what Colin said too about the logs.
Yeah.
Of the s- integration specialist meeting with teachers, troubleshooting, questions.
What kind of things are they doing?
That is valuable as well. You know, and that isn't gonna be a numbers.
Well, but it's, it's being able to look at those logs and say, you know, in year one, it was, we were looking for level one skills. But year two or three, we're looking at level three skill, or whatever that is, but yeah.
And there are, and there are, you know, continuums of tech integration, where certainly, you know, the first is. Just substituting what you would do on a paper pencil, you're now doing and, you know, taking app, that's kind of the baseline substitution.
Right.
As you get more proficient, then, yeah, exactly, then you would wanna see some really revolutionary types of things that you wouldn't be able to do. Had you not had the tech in your hand, and that's what we can certainly monitor as best we can. It won't be quantitative because that's almost impossible to do, but certainly we, we can look at it on that scale to know. Where we are within that kind of ladder or, you know.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you. And the red for the CAD for the lab for GMHS, that was really a financial situation, right? So we, we had had, in our lease, we thought that we were gonna be able to do that, then we replaced the teacher, basically the teacher laptops or. Uh iPads instead, yeah, so that still remains, that still remains, that still remains a goal, yeah. And then in terms of Tom Munis.
How, how, what's the cost of getting them to get the other units?
So we met with Mike Farrell the other day.
Cause we've been talking about this for.
I know, I told Mike, I said, I cannot make that red another year, okay? So we have to either decide we're doing it or not doing it, because if it was just up to us, we could do it.
Right.
But we work with the town and the town owns the licenses. So um there's sort of two things that we're talking about. One is the um budget module.
Which we use.
Which we use, and there's elements of that module that we can use, we, we have the rights to use it, so we're.
Purchasing.
Purchasing, so we're talking about, that's a goal for, you know, it's a future goal, which is to say, okay, you know. We have to train people in it, but how are people so, rather than have people be doing li- literally handwritten POs.
We're gonna get rid of that.
It, it's gonna be.
We just have to decide how we're gonna get the, the schools to do it, to get it up to the central office.
But theoretically, it should be.
Automatic.
A teacher submits a PO.
Yeah, but you can't have every single teacher on Munis, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, for sure.
So that's the thing.
Or like the department, whatever it is, but it should be submitted online, after the department goes to the principal, gets the signature, goes to you, gets the signature and done.
Exactly, it's, we just need to decide how we're going to get it to, to the principals.
The other is the payroll, right, which we've been trying to get to for quite a while. So Mike is going to, on his end, talk with his, no, Mike Farrell, talk to his people. And then we already have our, talk to our people. And um.
People have to talk to our people.
We just need to get tr- training, I mean, we.
So we, we need to, well, first we have to agree, we're gonna do it. And then we have to figure out what we need to do in terms of training, we absolutely need to do it. Like I gave Mike some examples, I said, you know, if I wanted to, you know, ask a question about Suzanne's attendance for the last three years.
Right, you gotta go to a book.
She shouldn't go to, I shouldn't have to go to three binders and and count up days, I should be able to push a button and it's, it shows it. So um and and it's just, you know, when you think about how many hours, I mean, when Tricia ever leaves or retires, I, I pay, I, I dread the day. Because she has so many spreadsheets and so many systems that, you know, she can tell you in a minute exactly where it is. But it's not, it's efficient for her, but, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's so silly when you have a module.
If it's possible, but we're not using it, or we don't have access to it.
But we have no access to it, so I don't think it's as much a big expense for the town in terms of a lot more licenses.
We just need training.
We just need to.
She needs formal training.
And we need to be able to identify the roles and responsibilities.
Right.
So I hope that's not.
So are we, are we, are we moving down that path?
We are, but we're waiting.
Would like to, but we were waiting for uh town.
Mike is, Mike is working on that on his end. He has to, I mean.
Is that the select?
No, no, uh, no, it's, Mike is, Mike's town administrator, the staff works for him.
Right, it's his staff.
So he's, he.
So it's like, I'm, I'm just wondering, is it treasurer, who?
No, it's the payroll person.
There's a payroll.
There's a payroll.
Department of town.
Right, I'm sorry.
So there's accounting, there's payroll, and then there's the treasurer, right? So, so we, we would be talking about the payroll.
Yes.
So we, I just wanna bring Munis into our payroll office, so that she can just process it there and then send it up to the town.
Right.
As opposed to her doing it on all fifty-seven spreadsheets and then sending to the town, and then she has to take them.
And then we'd have access to all of it in a moment, so.
It just needs to be.
And, and, again, it, there's, you know, it's, it's, there's priorities, right, and it's, it's just the way they've done it, and that's why I said to Mike, well, what stops? Us from doing it, and he said, well, you know, it's like the way it's always been done, I said, okay, well, I think we need to make the case that there's a more efficient way. You know, it's a more efficient way, so that's.
But it's hard to change when you're used to doing something, you know, when you've been in a job and doing it for a long.
Yeah, I mean, I think the current lady we talked about was, has been there almost twenty years, and Tricia's been here twenty.
Six.
I wanna say, not all in.
Payroll.
Payroll, but, you know, I mean, people have done the work the way they've done it for a long time. So I, I think they'll, this will move now, you know, timing is everything, sometimes, you know, it's a good idea, it just doesn't happen for lots of reasons. But I think everybody's understanding that this is something now that makes much more sense, now that they've got the chart of accounts done. You know, there's a number of things that have changed for the better.
Okay, so does Mike Farrell have a timeline that he shared?
Uh, he said he was going to chat, to chat with her and get back to us. And and we'll give him, we consider our reasonable amount of time and then we will follow up with him.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Speak up, you know what, it's, I mean, it's not really having the effect that we thought it might. I mean, I, Michael sees them too, I mean, I, I think maybe if we've gotten a dozen, if, even that's a generous, you know? So it's a good thing to have, but I don't know that we would invest a lot of energy in putting it at the schools, you know, we're not hearing from people that they can't. Whatever the system is at the school isn't working for them, I mean, people still, for me, use the email system and I'm pretty diligent about getting back to people, so. I don't, I don't think that, um and and as are all the administrators, you know, cause I usually get copied on a lot of that stuff, so I, I think it's.
Well, I think we're seeing a usage rate similar to whatever the district was that we spoke with, five or six a year.
You're right.
We're getting them five or six a year and we're doing it for free instead of for ten thousand dollars or whatever that program was, so.
Exactly, and, you know, I think the anonymous feature was, you know, sort of one of the things that we thought would be a draw, but most people don't do it anonymously. I mean, I think maybe of the, I'd say we, a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And then, fine.
With Twitter, I mean, you, you deserve a green.
Well, I'm, I'm lear- I'm learning about Twitter.
You are. You're doing amazingly.
I'm learning about Twitter, Peter tweet, Peter has Twitter, Peter tweets. And, um, Ryan Browner has just learned how to, you know, not learned, but Ryan has been given the green light to tweet, so
I mean, it's not easy to come up with what to say and be consistent and have a theme, you know, I mean, you
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it needs to be consistent, like, yeah.
Very, very good job.
Yeah.
With the sports, like, if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna say the soccer team, you have to do all of them, you know, you really have to
All of them, yeah, no, I know, it's hard, it's hard, it's hard.
Yeah, and and it has to be in a timely, to be effective, because that's what you wanna do, like, like, right now, I'd wanna know how the football team did.
Oh, it's gotta be fast.
Yeah.
So go to Twitter and see, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I do know what you mean. So, um, that's a great thing about Twitter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going up to two hundred eighty characters.
I know, I'm used to that one forty about that, I have trouble sometimes, like, just getting to the zero.
Oh, it is, I'd be happy about that.
Yeah, it's doubling the
I get to zero, I'm like, yes. But I want an explanation point, how can that be? So then I go in and I take the and and I make the little and sign, I get my characters on Twitter, yeah. So, how about, um, six?
I would love to see, similar to the food services, and this isn't really related to that, but again, like, how much facility use fees we're getting, how much we're using the turf field, like, all these revenue streams are more than just a red, yellow, or green. Supporting stuff behind it.
Yeah.
So remember the town hired a a budget analyst?
Did it?
Mr. President, same, right?
No, no, that was, he he came in to do a, um, a, this month, I mean
Oh, I gave him, that's right, the gentleman that came in and gave us the booklet. And have we
Yeah.
It was a very nice
Have we what?
Heard more about that, has that moved forward, that that project?
It's done.
That idea, it's done.
Yeah.
That was what they
And we're
What do you mean it
Well, I think the town, I think the town, I think right now, the town is trying to
When they finished.
The report was received.
Yes. To to look at it in their, in their budget discussions. I'm not sure exactly
So we haven't moved it forward, we haven't taken the suggestions.
Well, I, I think there was some, the only thing I'd say that was, like, I'd say moved forward a little bit was the way they were talking about the CIP. So a number of those things that were in that ten-year projection plan, I see are on the CIP list over multiple years, so I did see a little bit of a connection there. But in terms of, like, the thinking forward about, okay, so what's the budget in town gonna need to look like? You know, five years out, ten years out, and how is the town gonna figure out what revenue streams they're gonna have so that they can continue to move? I don't know that that level of discussion has has occurred, but perhaps it has.
And until it does, this this red on our plan has to stay red.
I, well, we were
The last page or That use the forecast for the budget analysts to plan long-term budgets.
Yeah, I mean
I mean, so it's really kinda out of our control right now, out of our hands.
I mean, I think what we're trying to do as a school committee, I think what you guys are trying to do as a school committee is have, um, you know, three, you're trying to plan out multiple years of budget, you know, like, three years. And, you know, we were talking about going again to the, to the town and saying, okay, you know, sort of where are we with our three-year projection, you know, remember we did that once before and it sort of looked dire, three years out? Every, they should be having every town department do that, so they have a picture of, you know, what what it might look like and and you know, what is, what is the budget pi- picture long-term? So, yeah, we're dependent a little bit on, you know, how the town interprets that, right? Because they, they're the ones that tell us how much money we're gonna get.
Right, right.
And it's a matter of matching our priorities with, or fitting our priorities within town-wide priorities and shuffling
Town, right. And I guess the, who was the late, who who was it that they said was gonna be the liaison?
Matt Newhall.
Yeah, Matt Newhall was gonna, is going to be the liaison to the school committee from FinCon.
Oh, okay.
FinCon.
Oh, great.
And the chair is still, um
It's still in.
And, yeah. In terms of, was there anything in seven that you wanted to talk about? We have some pretty, we have some goals in seven, you know, for this coming year, because we, you know, we have, uh, principal search, we have, um, you know, we have the NIESC, you know, work that we're doing.
I think observationally, it seems like we're putting a lot of, we can't do this PD because of NIESC, we can't do this because, like, I know NIESC is a lot, but it seems like we're, we're putting a lot of things, I don't wanna say on the back burner, but we're saying, we'll get to it after NIESC.
Well, we can't have a plan and schedule things out, you know?
I, I don't think the only thing, the only, I think the only impact that NIESC has had on this district has been that it's used PD done. It, there hasn't been a
Well, and may, well, yeah, but and maybe that, but there are, there are
And it is a reflective process, I mean, there is value in in it, I mean, it's a reflective of what are we doing? How can we improve? How do we wanna move forward? So, you know, that time, I mean, you say it's it's NIESC, they're not just filling out forms.
You have to spend, you have to spend the year before, I mean, it's just
Right.
Unless we decided we were not going to engage in the NIESC process, there are certain things you, there's certain things about that process that you have to do.
Right.
It's a, it's a pretty labor-intensive process.
But it's also supposed to be beneficial for the district.
It is, I mean, I think it is, I think it is, I think that, I think the, the school, the school will tell you that, you know, they have, it, they ha- it's introspective, they have to take a look at, you know, what is their evident, speaking of measurements? What is your evidence for the fact that you're, you know, meeting the standards for instruction? Or, you know, what is the evidence that your curriculum, this Atlas program's gonna save our life? Because it's, you know, it's a a a system where, you know, in real time, people are looking at their, at their curriculum, so but it is, it is a very time-consuming, you know, project, project for basically a year and a half, at least.
Well, and I think, too, it's hard because there's never enough time for professional, for enough professional development.
No, there's never, no, no, there isn't. Yes, I agree with that, Cheryl. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Colin's next, I think.
Great.
This should be smoother this time, Colin, we'll get it right on and on, there you go. Stay prepared.
Ring your own.
That's right.
Yeah.
Facility.
I threw it in the car before I, when I left the office.
The safest way to do it. Alright.
So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, so I'd like to take you through last year's MCAS results, um, but as as I'm sure you know, anyone who's watching knows, uh, the, last year was very different MCAS for for everyone in in Massachusetts. So, um, the first thing that I'd like to do and spend uh, as much time as we need to on it, is just explaining kind of what MCAS was last year um, and how that changed from years past and how that affects some of the data that we have available and how it's different and how it's new. Um, so first, I'd just like to talk a little bit about MCAS last year and and how did it change? What what were the differences? And, um, it is now called the Next Generation MCAS, or Next Gen MCAS. Um, and, uh, it was administered for the first time last year for, uh, the ELA and the math assessments for grades three through eight. Um, in years past, there had been waivers that schools could apply for to either do the, what's now called Legacy MCAS, the old one, um, or the park
Question.
Yeah, or the PARK test, or the PARK test. Um, and Georgetown in the past had had stuck with the Legacy MCAS. Last year, there was no decisions or waivers to be made, it was, everyone was taking this Next Generation MCAS, uh, which consists of, consisted of s- three things. Some legacy MCAS questions, so questions that we all know and love. Um, new MCAS questions that were developed by teams of educators and teachers around the state, um, that still followed a similar MCAS module, uh, model. And, um, some PARK questions that were taken from, um, those those few years of piloted PARK tests. So it was kind of a a mishmash of, I think
Everything together.
Everything, the best of both worlds, if that's how you see it, um, but they took, they took a little bit of everything to make this new MCAS. Um, and what that did was it changed not only, um, the questions that our students were were asked, but also the types of questions. So there were now new ways to answer questions that were not just your standard multiple choice or your long comp. Um, for instance, in some grades, there were multiple select questions where there was more than one correct answer that you had to choose from a menu, or a math question where the answer wasn't there to bubble in, you had to write your answer and explain how you got that answer. Um, so that was different for everyone. The other thing that was different, uh, last year was, this was the first year that the computer-based testing model was offered. Um, it was mandated for grades four and eight, which is what we took, uh, last year. So our kiddos, uh, with our iPads that were gracefully shared between the two buildings, uh, in grades four and eight, took the computer-based model. And, um, with that assessment, there became even more differences in how the test was administered. Um, now students were typing their responses instead of writing them longhand. Um, there were some different accommodations and different, um, ways that students could access the assessment based on the computer-based model. Um, so those are the big changes to the MCAS for last year. Any questions about that? There were some things that remained the same, uh, last year that that it it makes sense to to mention. First off, high school did not change. Um, our tenth graders, our sophomores took the the Legacy MCAS that has not changed in any of the subject areas for math, ELA, or science. Um, it was same old, same old, as far as our high school students. Uh, that was also true for the science assessment, um, for fifth and eighth grade, also for tenth grade. Um, the science test did not change, they were still using the the old standards, even though a new, uh, framework had been published previously that year. But, um, until twenty nineteen, so next year, uh, is when the science test will change, um, for our students. And lastly, uh, while the test changed, there was still paper and pencil MCAS, so not all of our students were, you know, using iPads with the with the new technology. Um, there's an ongoing rollout of the computer-based testing, so last year, we did fourth and eighth. This year, we will be doing MCAS, uh, on the computers for fourth through eighth, so four, five, six, and seven, uh, and eight. We'll take the computer-based, uh, test this year, uh, it went really smoothly last year as far as the rollout. Um, it's a lot easier to organize and manage and just keep track of what's going on. It was, I I had done it, um, in a previous district because they used the the PARK software, so I was very familiar with it. And, uh, it is pretty nice to, it was good for our time management because we could see, okay, this, we have five students who have five questions left. So, you know, the rest of our students can go on with their day, we'll take those five, we'll make sure that they have a nice testing, uh, facility to to finish that test up, but we can now get on with instruction for the rest of the day. So it was nice to, um, to man, to organize, to manage, it's easy to set small testing groups, so if we have students with accommodations that need specific testing areas, it's really nice to set that up. So it went really well last year, so we're expanding it, uh, beyond what is mandated by the state, we're we're adding on a few more grades this year, so that was nice.
Okay, so this year, grades three and ten will still do paper pencil.
Correct, three and ten will be, uh, paper-based. Next year, twenty nineteen, is the big kind of everybody's on board year, so computer-based testing for everyone and Next Gen MCAS tests for everyone, twenty nineteen. That may or may not change in high school, cause I think there is an accountability measure in the high school for students, so they're still weighing options on if twenty nineteen will be that that new test for the high school, or if it'll be twenty twenty.
Yeah, they're talking about the class of tw- twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, having there be, uh, they're talking about it being a fairness, uh, adjustment because they're, they're worried about, you know, what happens in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two if you, if all of a sudden the standards are that much higher and then kids can't hit the target in that, um, in that window of time. So I think they're, they're mindful of that, so they're, I think it's really gonna be the the expectation of the real ratcheted up standards are gonna be for the class of twenty twenty-three. Where it's gonna be a higher sta- a real higher standard, yeah.
So those were kind of the nuts and bolts changes. Um, with those changes, there are a lot of things that that means for for the school district and for Georgetown. Um, because with the Next Generation MCAS, they didn't just change the test to, change the test. Um, there are new frameworks and new standards for ELA, math, and science now. Um, and the expectations wa- were raised for what students are expected to do with those new standards, so they need an assessment that followed, uh, those new expectations. So, there were a lot of changes, um, and what that means to Georgetown. The first is the accountability ratings for schools, uh, because it was a brand-new test. Schools that had a ninety percent or higher attendance rate of just sitting and taking the assessment. Doesn't matter how you scored, doesn't matter what you did, doesn't matter if you just
Sit down and take the test.
Click and submit, if you
Kids in their seats.
Yeah, if you had a ninety percent, I mean, not, of course, our students, they try their best, they they
Yes.
Yes. Um, but as long as you met that ninety percent threshold, those schools were not given an accountability rating as we have known them, that one through five rating for schools. Um, so because of that, um, our elementary, so Pendruck and the middle school has a no-level rating, if you go to the school profiles for twenty seventeen, you're used to seeing, you know, that that one, that two right there, um, it says no level. And the only data that you have available is that, uh, attendance percentage. You'll see that we had ninety-eight percent of our students took that, so that's why we have no level. Which I I understand why the state did because it's a benchmark year, and we'll talk more about that, but we don't wanna hold anyone accountable to something that, um, is is brand-new to everybody, is a little frustrating, cause it makes our job a little harder to piece out what, how, how we can interpret those results.
But it was definitely an attempt to basically say to people, if you choose to opt out, which was the threat with PARK, is people were gonna say they weren't gonna take it. Then you immediately became a level three, immediately.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
If you were below that ninety percent
You were below ninety, you're immediately at a level three, and if you were a level four or five, they didn't move you.
Right.
So a lot of schools that are very, are very frustrated by that, too, they decided you're, you didn't lose your level.
So coming out, coming out of the other side of this no-level year, is, with Pendruck having been a three last year, last year?
Yep.
Last year. Um, I get, it's confusing, cause this test was done, yeah.
I know.
Seven year before, really.
Seven year before. Is there, does any of that sort of, is the expectation that any of that will carry over, or is everyone sort of starting fresh once this
Fresh.
Has a little data behind it?
Thank you for the segue.
Oh, sorry, okay.
This is the baseline.
So this, this, so twenty seventeen is the new baseline year, it's the new benchmark year. So because it was a brand-new assessment, there are no apples-to-apples comparisons, so any of the data or any of the reasons that we were a level-three school don't hold water anymore.
Okay.
Um, twenty seventeen will be the year in which they they make our goals for the next six years, um, based on last year's data.
Okay.
Um, so, we're kind of, it's it's kind of blank slate, tabula rasa for everybody, we're all starting fresh, here's, here's where we're at.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that we can't pull some of that data for that, for those subgroups or for the, for the specific students. Um, but it only is from the new assessment, we can't really draw comparisons to, this group of students did
This was
Perform this way in twenty sixteen and they perform this way in twenty seventeen, because it's a different assessment.
Right. Okay.
Um, the other thing that changed for Georgetown and for everyone is, uh, the difference in achievement-level names. So before, we had advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. Um, now they are all about the expectations, so whether students are exceeding those expectations, meeting the expectations, partially meeting, or not meeting the expectations. And the expectation there, this is important, is performing, uh, adequately at the next, so, at the next year's grade level. So if I'm a fourth grader, taking my fourth-grade MCAS, meeting expectations means that I will
I'm ready.
More, then I am ready to perform fifth-grade level work. Because they take the assessment in the spring, so they want the expectation to be, students to be prepared for the following grade level. Make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Is going from proficient, there were four categories, there are four categories?
Yep.
They don't-
Do they in any way correlate, align?
No, and they don't. And when we look at this slide, which is what was sent home, the description, if you were to compare this report that is sent home this year to last year's report, and you look at the descriptors of what does it mean to meet expectations? And if you compared that to proficient, the language would read very differently.
Okay.
So, yeah, the state was really, on the webinars that we sat in, on the letters that was sent home from the commissioner, the acting commissioner, it was very clear that we don't want people to draw these comparisons from years past to the new test. The last thing that was changed for Georgetown and every other district in the state was the distribution of student results within those four achievement levels. If you think of in the past, in the high school, because that didn't change, so that's a good comparison. We have, you know, 95% of our kids either, you know, proficient or advanced. For this new assessment, the state averaged, we can take a look at that now, actually. So this is a distribution of the projected statewide results for 3rd through 8th grade ELA and math. Let me just break this down. So the blue and red bars are the percentage of students that were either not meeting expectations or partially meeting expectations, so in those bottom two categories. And you can see in every grade level in both ELA and math, it's hovering around 50%. And that's statewide. So 50% of the students in the state will be in those bottom two categories this year. And then that goes to reason that 50% around there would be in those top two categories. Either the meeting expectations or the exceeding expectations, those yellow and green bars. So that's a very different distribution than what we had been tipped, we had been used to seeing where we have 70, 80, 90, 95% of our students in those top two categories. Because the level of rigor of that assessment was raised, the standards are now, have a higher expectation, and because it's a new assessment for everyone, the state is kind of letting people know that, don't expect to see that same distribution as you had in years past.
And that's, and the scores, the scores within each span are wider now.
Yes.
It's more, they're wider.
So there's a 30, so if we go back to that last slide, there's a 30-point span between each achievement level. So 500 is the new cutoff, whereas I think with the old, it was 420, I can't remember.
Is that number, to the apples-to-apples, is that number calculated the same? Or is that, is 500 the new 425? Like, is that, yes.
Okay. Yeah. So here's a quote that I've pulled. I shared it with our teachers, I shared it with our Pendrick School Council, I will share it with our school committee now. This was taken from a PowerPoint that we listened to from the department. "The results do not mean," this is in regards to the difference in distribution, "the results do not mean that students learn less. The next-generation MCAS measures in a different way. Remember, 2017 is the baseline year, the first year of a new assessment, and we expect scores to change over time as occurred when the legacy MCAS debuted in 98." So again, that 50-50 split, they really wanted to get out in front of it and say, it's okay, we're doing really good things. And the other thing is the partially-meeting expectation as opposed to the needs improvement. That language is important because it means that you can be partially-meeting expectations and be doing some things really well, but you may not just be over that hump in those few areas. So you could be partially-meeting expectations but just need to make that little shift, and you can get into that meeting expectations category.
But we definitely are looking at the difference about what does, the kids look different. If you're a, if you're a low, lower score end of that partially-meeting versus an upper end of that partially-meeting, what you would do for students is very different.
So we'll go through some of the results here, and I'm happy to explain anything that you have questions with. But at the last slide, I have some key takeaways that I think are most important for us to look at. So first, what I could pull that should look familiar is the high school data because it didn't change. The assessment didn't change. So we have PPIs, we have CPIs, and as they have done historically in the past, the high school, again, knocked it out of the park last year. In, so the top graph there is ELA, the bottom is math. I have science on the next slide. But they were coming in really high with the 96.5, or sorry, the 99.1 for all of our students. And we were at 99.0, that is still above our target that was set for the school six years ago. So our high school students for ELA are doing very well. And they have the bonus points to show for that, which I'll show on the next slide. Same thing for mathematics. We, you know, met our target for, for that, we're a little bit below for that six-year goal, but still, you know, if you're above the 95s, it's, you're playing with decimals there to really reach it up to 100. So you can see that those students did very well. The top bar there is the science for 10th grade. So again, 95.2 CPI, which is very impressive. And then that bottom chart there are all of the bonus points that we can be awarded, and that's for specific narrowing proficiency gaps, getting more students into the advanced category, pulling more students out of that warning category. So 100 points is the maximum that you can receive for that extra credit. And you can see in almost every category, we are earning some type of extra credit points for 2017. That really helps, the calculation that gives your cumulative PPI, takes into account those bonus points. So our high school students, again, they killed it last year and they did very well in that MCAS. Questions?
So the only thing that, so I'm looking at like math and science.
Yeah.
So we got no points because we didn't get that 10% or more off of the warning failure-
Correct.
-for math or science.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
That's just a tricky, as you're getting people out of, out of there, the fewer people you have, it's harder to actually get those points if, yeah.
I would be-
At some point, you can't realistically get those points.
Yeah. Of the, I think we have maybe three students that were in warning for math. So getting 10% of those three out is, it's-
Yeah. Statistically, difficult.
Right. So moving into the middle school, this is where we start to see the new assessment data. And big picture, I felt that this, that these charts were the most relevant, especially knowing what the state averages were for those four achievement-level categories. So if you remember that the baseline is about 50-50. 50% of the students in the state were above, 50% of the students were below those top two and bottom two categories. That's where we can really start to draw a distinction of how our students did comparatively to the state. And I'm happy to see that for the district data for 8th grade and for all of our grades, you will see our blues are higher than the states and our reds are lower than the states.
Yes.
Which means that we are, that we basically outperformed that state average of 50-50 split between the two.
How about compared to what we would consider our peer group?
So we looked at our admin team meeting, we were just throwing out districts because I can filter by district and comparatively. I mean, I think where you would expect to see us performing equally, we were. I think it was, I'm happy to get anyone, it's public, so I am happy to, you know, if you're interested in seeing how another district did or how we did comparatively, I can certainly pull that. We weren't surprised when we saw any district that were, you know, that we happened to name. They shook out as-
Where we should be.
As we should be, yeah. The bottom there is the 8th grade science. Again, you'll see the old achievement levels there because the science assessment did not change. So that's why you see advanced, proficient, needs improvement in the warning.
Keep up.
Yeah. So I'll just go through these quickly because they tell a very similar story from grade to grade, which I think is a very good thing. That means that all of our grades performed better than the state. Our blues are higher than our reds, and that deep red, that's our not-meeting expectations. We were very happy to see that all of those not-meeting expectations were lower than the state averages as well. Because those are the, we really don't wanna see any of our students not-meeting expectations. And when we have fewer than the state, that means that we're doing, we're on the right track, even with this new assessment. 6th grade, far more students meeting expectations in the ELA, more students meeting expectations in math. 5th grade, again, that bottom is the science assessment because it did not change. So that's just why the colors differ there.
Yes, you know, I'm hoping that with our science, new science curriculum, as we do that, Colin, we'll see those, you know, sci, we just never have really been all that satisfied with our science course.
Yeah, so that was the one area where we were, so 49% of our students are in the top two, 51 are in the bottom two for science. And I think that is an indicator that we needed to make some type of shift with science at the elementary school and-
The state's not doing so hot either.
That's true, right.
But, you know, but, well, and the standards have changed.
Yes, they have.
That assessment is the old standard.
Yeah, so that will be, the old science standards are very much content-specific, where you need to memorize and remember science terms. The new standards are not that at all. It's very much scientific inquiry-driven, which is very new. 4th grade, now this is important to look at because 4th grade, if you remember, was one of the grades that took the new computer-based test. So it's hard to measure how much of an impact or effect that had on our students with the assessments. We can ask them about it, we can get their thoughts. It's hard to suss out from the data how much that had an effect on them. I just tell our teams that it is a variable to keep in mind when we're looking at 4th grade.
Can I ask, and I'm totally picking at data points, which isn't fair. 7 and 5 math, so there's a lot of, you know, tall- I'm gonna get the colors wrong. But when we compare district to state on grade 7 and 5 math-
Yeah.
We are much closer to the state average than the other grades. What's driving, what's driving the other grades better or driving 7 and 5-
Right.
-closer to that average? And go.
I'm not sure if I have a succinct answer for that question. And I think that is one of the things that our vertical teams are doing this year is, now that we have this data, we know what the new assessment criteria is. We can look at specific questions, we can look at specific areas. The new standards have kind of their anchor standards, where I know for 5th grade, there's a big anchor standard on volume. And there's a lot of questions on the 5th grade assessment for volume.
So if we're not hitting-
So if we're not hitting volume or if it's not coming up enough-
Right.
We probably know that that may be a gap. So without really, we need to dive into it to find out where those gaps are. The good thing now, in the last three weeks, all of the data has now been published. So now we can pull the small-group analyses, we can pull the student-by-student, you know, we have the released assessment, we know what standards were asked, and we can see for the, for the multiple-point questions, because now it's not multiple choice, it's either right or wrong, there are now like three or four point, or three or four-step questions where you can get a one out of three, or a two out of three, or a three out of three. We can dive into, how many points are our students getting of those multi-point questions and really dive into that. But, you know, you're seeing some of the things that we're seeing as well and we're diving into in grade levels.
Well, I remember when we were talking about the Level 3 status when that occurred two years ago. I believe there was concern with like this, the 5th grade cohort. So they're now in 7th grade, too.
Oh, okay.
So sometimes that does happen. That's a good point, Cheryl.
It is. So just a few takeaways, and then I'm happy to take any questions that you guys have. A couple positives that I've already mentioned, but all of our grade levels in both ELA and math were above the state averages as far as meeting and exceeding expectations. So that was, we were prepped when we were listening to those webinars. We were kind of setting, we were, our expectations, I don't wanna say were low, we just didn't know. And when we saw that all of our grades were above that 50-50 split, we were very happy. Another point that I wanna make is we had fewer students that were in those, that not-meeting expectations category in nearly all grades than the state. Again, we are, we certainly want all of our students to be meeting or exceeding expectations. If students are partially-meeting expectations, we know where those strengths and areas of needs are. We certainly don't wanna have our students not-meeting expectations. And that's, you know, it's nice to see that we were already above the curve there. Something that we wanna continue to think about and look at, which I know that we already would have done, but the initial data bears it out, is that those high-need subgroups in some areas were not as successful as state averages on the new assessment. So it's still an area of need for Georgetown, and we wanna continue to work with those high-need subgroups. We saw lots of success from two years ago to last year. It's harder to draw the comparisons from last year to this year because of the new assessment. But we know that we're doing good work with those subgroups. We just know that we're not, the work is not done yet, and we gotta keep on it.
And, you know, those kids have a bigger gap to narrow. Do you know what I mean? So we can look student-by-student, which we do look student-by-student. And you could see students that maybe were in the warning category last year, and now they're in the needs improvement, low-needs improvement. You know, the goal is, by the time kids get to 10th grade, all of our, all of our kids are getting, 100% of our kids are passing MCAS, with very few exceptions needing to take the test beyond 10th grade. They have until 12 to take it and pass it. So, you know, that speaks to the fact that, A, the more, the longer kids are exposed to the standards, the more they build accumulation of their knowledge. And I think, B, is also the fact that we have all this information and we use the information. We can make adjustments that allow kids to catch up.
How is the information from the state this year, is it noticeably?
It was similar, wasn't it? I mean, I'd say it was similar. We got item analysis.
I know there's a lot of-
We didn't get student growth yet.
Enrishing about what we would get.
Yes, but I think they heard that message.
Yeah, it was, and I was worried at the beginning of the year because when I started in this position last year, I was able to get right in and pull, I learned a lot about the district because I could pull all that data right away. It wasn't made available until mid-October this year. Fortunately, when it was made available, I, we are able to pull reports, all the important reports that we would want to pull, were able to pull.
It is helpful.
Yes.
Well, I think that the state clearly heard, because the people who took Park were very disappointed in the fact that the Park test results were not at all what we're used to from MCAS, to the point where you can really dig in and try to figure out what, well, what is behind that number. So I think that message was received that, you know, districts aren't gonna be able to do much with this if you don't give us enough information so we can at least try to figure out what the problems are, the solutions, the successes are. Thank you, Colin. Good job.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna, I think it would be helpful, at least for me, to, and I know what is the peer group is obviously a very difficult question, but to see, I would just love to see us. It's important to compare us to the state, but I think we also, clearly, we wanna be above the state average, but we also wanna be competitive.
Yeah, yeah, of course. And any other reports that the committee would like, just for the sake of brevity, I didn't include them here. But if there's anything specific that you'd like to take a look at, happy to run them off to you or meet with you and discuss.
We can talk about which districts to pull, but, yeah.
Yeah.
You can definitely do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That light is pretty strong. Thank you, Margaret.
So we do have the middle-high school principal search here, too, that just wanted to-
Yeah, this is, this is a draft, you know, I wanted your thoughts on it. You know, it is an important process, you know, it's an important position. And so we wanna be sure that there's some inclusiveness to it. It's not just me picking the person I want. So, you know, I'm interested to hear your thoughts. And I did work with Peter on this, too, because Peter, of course, when he was, you know, selected in Georgetown, he was, you know, he was applying to lots of different, to different places. So, you know, I'm just trying to pick his brain about, you know, so what were the steps? And then, of course, I've done a number of principal searches myself in other places that I've been. And I was a principal myself at one point, having gone through a search. So, you know, there's all kinds of ways you can do it. But I was trying to hit a timeline that, you know, completes the search at it in a period of time when you're not likely to get somebody who might accept your job and then take another.
Right.
Because there's other jobs that are still in the works. But also not to wait so long that you really don't get a good pool. You're not, you're not in the pool. It's one thing if somebody leaves and you have no choice, you've gotta scramble. But, you know, we're not in that situation. So the thought here would be that that end of March is, is that sweet?
That's the perfect thing.
That's what, you know, we think, and based on my discussion with colleagues. I know Newburyport High School's gonna be looking as well. So within, just within this region, there'll, you know, there'll be some competition.
Yeah. So under advertised position, who is the assistant to the superintendent?
Oh, that's Laura. Laura calls herself assistant.
Okay.
There's not, there's no assistant superintendent. I didn't create a new position.
Yeah, I did. Good to know.
I could've written Laura Markarian.
Those two little words to the mean something.
I think my, I think my biggest takeaway, or my biggest question that came out of this, was sort of the school committee role in the process ends really quickly. I guess I was surprised to see, knowing that there, and I didn't count it, 16- I guess I was surprised to see, knowing that there, and I didn't count at sixteen, seventeen people on the screening committee. I guess I was a little surprised not to see a school committee member in there.
Well, I was kind of envisioning the community member would probably be the school committee member because that's kind of the role you play. And you could end up being a parent as well, you know, all of you are parents.
So how does, let me, how does the screening committee get selected?
Well, what I would do is I would, so that's why I'm trying to identify different kinds of roles that people would play. And then we see, we assess the interest. We see how many people want to be on it. It might not be a problem at all, right? There, we may struggle to get, you know, enough people in a particular area. And then I, I think we try to figure out the most fair way to do it. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to pulling people's names out of a hat. Because I do feel that sometimes, like how do you, if you've got seven parents and you want four of them, how do you, how do you choose? Like, do I sit there and go, oh, well, I like Barbie and Ariana better? Or I think Michael Hinchcliffe would be somebody I would want to deal with, so I'm not even gonna, you know, I mean, some people want to just know that there's some fairness to it.
Right.
And again, I'm not opposed to including the school committee. It's just that generally speaking, my experience is school committee members are not on the, on the search committee necessarily, although Barbie was on for one of the principals, I think, right? From the school committee, right?
I guess I, I'm, and I totally understood. It seems like a disconnect between, we have strategic goals and strategic plan and all this stuff. And I guess I'm surprised to not see a school committee member in there to represent those goals at that. Choosing a principal is the person who's supposed to embody all those goals and visions and all that, and all that stuff. And I don't mean to put it that way. It's obviously all important.
Right, exactly.
And that doesn't necessarily align with what parents might want, what students, it's putting a voice to the stuff that we spend a lot of time on over and over and over again. We did, we spent an hour talking about our strategic plan. I would be curious to know, you know, if we look at the parents, the community member, the students, I'll leave the staff members out. How many of those, and that's half the committee, that I don't think could speak necessarily to the strategic plan? I just want to make, make sure that there's voice to, it seems like there should be a voice to what we discuss every week or every other week as compared with the broader community.
So is your, are you advocating to have?
I am, yeah. And I'm saying one out of seventeen, not, certainly not a quorum. Certainly not a quorum, but not, I'm not saying it should be two out of, just a voice in there, is my.
Because I don't think you're going to have difficulty finding.
Parents?
Parents.
No, I don't think so. I don't think we will have.
I think you may end up having to pick it out of a hat.
I think so too.
Because this is a big deal. I mean, it's been fifteen years and so to have, like, you know, we are parents. We are community members, but to not have like per se, it's a one school committee member on there. I think it would be difficult because our names might not be pulled out of that hat if it came to that.
I'm not opposed to putting somebody on there. I'm also just trying to make sure that we, we make sure we balance the roles. Like, I don't want anybody on the committee thinking the school committee has a bigger role.
Right. Well, and that's why I'm saying one out of.
Because they're sitting there, right? That people don't say, well, you know, well, Barbie's a school committee, of course, you know, she's, she's going to have a higher vote. No, that's not how it's scheduled to be. But I, as long as we can make sure that everybody is understanding of exactly who's, you know, who's representing what. I don't, I don't really have a problem with it. I think that that was the thinking behind it was that there, you know, that it was really, you know, the school committee, of course, would have the opportunity to, you know, be part of focus groups and tell me what you're looking for and all that kind of stuff. But at the end of the day, it was a school-based committee because it's basically going to affect the people in the schools more. The way I was pulling in the strategic plan part is the, through the administrative team. Because they also have to, you know, if you look at, there's a step in here that they're, that they're going to be meeting with them too. Because as, just as the school is going to be working with the principal, obviously intimately, we're choosing, we're a little team. We're choosing people on the team that we know, you know, are going to bring something to, you know, they're going to add depth to our team, right? They're going to bring something, you know, new and special, right? So that, that's kind of how I was balancing that. But I don't have a problem putting a school committee member on there, just as long as, you know, we all understand that.
One member of the team. I love the fact that there are four students on there. I think that's really, really important.
Well, you know, my experience when, as we've been doing these kind of searches in this district, you know, like whether, whether it's through hiring a principal or like when we've done all those assistant principals over the years, you know, the kids, the kids add a lot of value. And they, and they appreciate being part of that, part of the process.
So this could be quite a long process. So how will that?
For the students?
Well, for everybody. So I know in the past, when I have been on those committees, it's, it's like you are required to attend each meeting. Because how can you go in and say?
Right, if you're going to interview people, you have to.
Right. So, I mean, for students, because there's a lot of, so would they be taken out of class and then going over like it's during the day?
Probably wouldn't schedule these during the day. I probably wouldn't schedule a lot of interviews during the day.
So it would be like a?
Initial interviews.
Theoretically, they're probably, the candidate, I assume, would be working.
Working too.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I mean, you know, when they come to the district, you know, when we narrow it down and they come to the district and they spend like the day here or they spend a couple of hours here, then certainly we might do some of that.
So, but the students would be playing the same role as these other, attending every meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would hope so.
Explain to them just what the level of.
What the commitment is.
Commitment, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because I just, I do feel like this is a really important job.
It is. What is the, the goal in terms of the number of applications? And I know there's, there's quality, like, you don't want a hundred if seventy-five of them are junk.
Right, so.
What's, when, when can we say that we have a good?
Pool?
Pool. Is it two, five, ten, twenty?
No, I would expect in the, I would expect in the first round that you'd have anywhere between twenty and thirty applicants
Okay.
in the first round. Right? And I think that would get screened down to, you know, usually, it depends, you know, obviously you set the criteria and then you decide. Okay, here are all the people who sort of meet the criteria and then when you decide who gets an interview. So, you know, usually you'll see anywhere between, you know, nine and eleven people in a first round of interviews, you know, so you screen it down. Some will just not meet your criteria.
Right.
And then, and then you narrow, then you narrow it down and then usually you don't have any more than four finalists. Although, you know, if somebody's a close fifth, you might.
Right.
But, you know, you want to be careful too, because you don't want to narrow it down right to two and then either of them take your job.
Right. And then it's very much a.
So you, so you have to.
Well, then it's A or B instead of A versus the pool.
Right, right, right. But, you know, a lot of times if you're down to three or four candidates and you bring them all into the district, you know, you'll, you know, you'll, you'll see the difference.
Spread, yeah.
Yeah, you'll see the spread. But then it does, it becomes a crapshoot, right? So, you know, then you want to, you want to make sure that people that are in your pool are going to take the job if you offer it to them. Right? Because there's nothing worse than that, right? Everybody's got their heart set on candidate A and, you know, candidate A isn't even likely to take your job because they're finalists in two other places that they, you know. So, so, you know, we have to just play the process out. But I just wanted to, you know, lay out the process, you know, so that we can have a discussion about it.
Clear, well thought out.
I want to talk with the faculty about it, you know, I just wanted to, you know, get it started. Because I, I don't want to be in a situation where we're, you know, we're scrambling, yeah.
Good to have all those dates.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, we have a financial report.
So.
It's gonna be a short discussion.
Yeah, right. Does anybody have any questions about it or?
Is it just housekeeping?
Yes, it's just housekeeping, yep.
Preparing for next week's financial.
We can't accept any donations either, so we'll do that.
Good to see them nonetheless.
Thank you, thank you, Colin.
Good to see them nonetheless.
Yeah, absolutely. So I did want to take some time, not to put Michael on the spot or anything, but I want to thank him and tell him how much we as a committee appreciate the fact that he's gone to the MASC, the SSS conference, the fourth time.
Fourth time.
We greatly appreciate it because it's a long, it's a long few days of, you know, but I know some school committees, the whole group goes, which is great too, but that just doesn't, doesn't.
But it's everybody's schedule, right?
So we really do appreciate the time that you take away from your own family and, you know, to go and see all the things that are going on and then come back and report it to us. So what do you want to tell us about this visit?
It was, it was good again. I think, and I feel like I've said this every year, I think it's, it's good to see what other school districts are working through. I think some of their challenges are very similar. And it's also good to see some ways where we're, I don't want to say ahead, but, you know, there are schools talking about doing, hey, PBIS, PBIS would be a good idea and we're further down the road in terms of pursuing that strategy.
Did they have anything on start school later?
There was not.
No, so last year it was.
No, correct.
Last year they signed a resolution or something.
Last year there was a, it was.
Yeah, that they, and that, yeah, so I'm, so maybe, I just thought maybe they'd have like another.
Not unless I missed it, though.
Panelists or something.
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't see it on the agenda.
I did look at the agenda, but then after I looked, I'm like, I should have looked specifically for that, so it wasn't like.
I'm pretty sure there was not.
Yeah, okay.
There was a lot of, the focus was on the opioid crisis.
Sure.
So there's a lot of, a lot of focus on that. At least one of the keynotes, if not two, were addressing that. But no, it was a good, it was a good conference again. I guess I don't have specifics.
What sessions did you go to, Michael?
Oh.
I mean, just in general, like general topics.
Yeah, I went.
Keynotes, I know, but.
There were the keynotes, which are, which are interesting, but also very.
They're keynotes.
They're, they're flashy and big and I went, probably not surprisingly, to one or two on budgeting. Kind of strategies and what other schools are facing and we're facing very similar challenges. I did that, I did a, there was social media one. I guess more than opioid, opioid, it was also more, a little, I don't want to say wellness, but a little more kind of holistic.
Right.
So it's well protected.
Yeah, less social emotional, more holistic, like helping kids.
Be resilient.
Be resilient. Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Right, and don't take everything to heart.
Don't take, yeah, exactly.
Know how to advocate for yourself.
Exactly.
Suicide prevention.
There was a little bit of that, I think, in there. So, yeah, I did budget. I would actually have to look at my, my notes in my list. Did put me on the spot. But, yeah, so.
So was the attendance, did you think it was comparable to years past?
It was comparable, yeah, which I think is good because I think four years ago, honestly, I think it was a good size and it got bigger.
Oh.
And so there are, if you don't get to the session fifteen minutes early, you don't get a seat.
Yeah.
Although that said, there are very clearly big sessions that a lot of people want to go to and then there are others that you can show up a half an hour late and you could pick from ten seats.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of a mix of.
I really wish they would change the location, you know, like even every couple of years, like change, it's in hiatus.
And I, you know, I feel the same way, but you got it, you can't just go down for the day, really. I mean, I guess you can, but.
Well, and a lot of the state has to go really far to get to you. Like, we're actually relatively close.
It's like Marlboro. Usually they'll hit Marlboro.
Yeah, like, yeah, somewhere.
And Marlboro has so many conference centers. But that's good. I'm glad that it was good and the weather was.
Yeah, weather was, was good.
So it wasn't like the, the traffic was difficult or things like that.
They didn't close down ninety-five on Saturday, which is helpful, like they did last year.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Right, getting in and out.
Yeah. Well, that's good. I'm glad, again, we appreciate you going and taking the time.
Yes, yes.
I feel like that was a vague, I'll formulate thoughts.
I'm waiting for Pam to say, how is the food?
You're right, she usually does say that.
I don't eat there.
Did you enjoy it? Didn't eat?
I don't eat there, no. I don't.
You don't?
Not at the conference.
Okay.
They're, well, I mean, all their keynote, they're all, I mean, you can.
Are they luncheon, are they luncheon keynotes?
They have lunch and dinner keynotes every day. And I, I, I think keynotes are important. I don't necessarily see the value of spending. It's a sixty-dollar lunch or eighty dollars. So you can, you can take.
It's not part of the, you have to pay extra.
So you can take, I think there is value in the two-hundred-dollar ticket price, but you can spend, you can easily spend five or six hundred bucks.
Lunches and dinners aren't included?
And they're, because they're all bigger speakers and.
Wow, I did not know that.
So, and I have not necessarily seen the value of sitting in a room of three hundred people listening to a speaker.
Yeah, because I'm.
The subway across the street is great.
Thinking like the superintendent's conference that they have in the summer, it, you know, all the food.
Is included.
But it, but it's done.
It's a much smaller scale.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sure it is a much smaller, and it, and it isn't.
I mean, in fact, the day, a day on the hill, I mean, the lunches, that's the focal point, that's the.
That's what you got.
Do they still do that because they haven't?
I know they didn't last year.
Well, they didn't last year because.
Yeah, because all the vocational schools did the, did the lunch and it was delicious.
It'll be on this year.
If not, you're not going again, right, Pam?
Well, I'll have to give it some thought.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
If it is on, I highly recommend everyone join.
That is, that is a nice one, yes.
Okay, so since we can't vote on any of these things, let's just quickly do a subcommittee report and then we will be done for the evening. So I, did you have a safety meeting today?
We did, yes, yes.
Okay, how'd that go?
It was very, it was very well. We went through a number of topics. It was shorter than usual. We didn't have, I don't know, there weren't that many people.
Well, Margaret had a community gathering. It was her Veterans Day thing, so, so, you know, we wanted to, several wanted to go to that.
Right, so Vicki Lake came by from NRT and so the bus issues continue to improve in general due to crowding on bus two, which we had talked about before at the previous meeting. Change for the Penbrook buses will begin after Thanksgiving. When the Pearly Convenience Stop will be switched to bus one from bus two.
Right.
Cindy, Cindy McKenzie of NRT will help to write a letter to parents and we will communicate with parents in three ways. The bus driver will give a letter to the students. The schools will send a letter out to the parents and Margaret will put it in her.
This week.
This week.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's good.
That's why we're waiting till Thanksgiving, because we feel we have a window where we can do all that.
Right. We did discuss when the children are getting back at the end. The latest right now is three forty to three forty-five. So that's.
Most of the routes are finishing before three-thirty, but there's one that, you know.
That's bus four.
Yeah, bus four.
So they're not getting on at two forty-five though, right? Are they getting on like three?
Much closer, much closer, much closer to two forty-five.
Oh, okay, so they are on the bus for an hour.
Much, yeah, although bus four is, it isn't the case for bus four. Bus four just has a longer route and it gets there last. So that's why bus four is the last one in.
Okay.
But we haven't been hearing from parents that they're, you know, their kids are getting home late. You know, we're before, we were hearing four o'clock or after. And I think Hope, Hope and has, has said that it's, they're, they're bringing the kids right out as opposed to sitting in the calf. So they're loading more quickly. So, you know, they think the bus drivers have really been working.
Yeah, so things are getting better.
It definitely sounded like things were getting better.
Moving in the right direction. So then school reports, Margaret reported that we had a, she conducted a fire drill last week. And communication between all the adults involved was good. There was before, just a little, some of the, the administrators and the fire people didn't know each other, but now they do, they're communicating, so that's, that's good. And they're going to conduct another one in a few weeks, about a month.
They didn't feel that the kids were, maybe some of them taking it seriously or didn't feel like the behavior was what they were hoping it would be. So Margaret wants to do another one.
Review student expectations.
Yeah, she reviewed the expectations, but now she wants to give them another shot to, yeah, get it right.
Yeah. So the public safety reports, Officer Henry was there and he talked about the middle school presentation that was on Wednesday, which by the way, I went to, on social media. He talked a little bit about vaping. And I thought he was very, very effective and the students, you know, they felt comfortable enough to ask questions and they were processing it and he had a couple little video clips in between. And he talked about, you know, the real situations that people get themselves, and young people, but, you know, many people get themselves into making assumptions about.
Uh, making assumptions about how they put themselves out there in, in the, in cyberspace and, uh, you know, not. Quite understanding the, the implications of that and the repercussions. So he, and he talked about civil rights violations and he talked about, we talked about cyberbullying and we talked about a lot of important.
Well, that's good.
Sexting.
Sexting.
Good.
Yes, yeah.
Can I ask a, an Officer Henry question? Um, and not to be critical, 'cause I think his, his traffic directing is great. He's getting there later and later, I find. Coming out of Penbrook after picking up my daughter. I am sitting there as he is arriving and he takes a few, and, and this sounds very critical. As he's arriving and taking his poles out and getting ready, traffic is already challenging as he's setting up. So I'm wondering, I think it's a matter of.
Pickup?
At pickup. I think it's a matter of five minutes or ten minutes, you don't know what it is.
Stuck at the schools doing something.
Yeah, he's always coming from, like, from the high school side when he's getting there, so I don't know, I mean, I have no idea obviously where he is, but, um.
I'll ask.
I, he helps traffic immensely and I'm finding that he gets there later, so.
Yeah, and people, like, people know too. I think, I almost even think, 'cause I run there in the morning usually, so it's almost like I. Think people from other towns that come through Georgetown know too that, okay.
Yeah, I see them everywhere.
Yeah, you gotta be, you know, there's a police up there now and I think people are more aware of it, which is great.
The flesh.
But he does help.
Flashlight.
Yeah, and in the.
Colons.
Yeah, exactly.
Giant.
Well, he said several times. Well, because that corner is.
It is a tough corner if you're not watching what you're doing.
It is, the people have to make a big swing out to the left.
Yeah, yeah. The sight lines aren't great there.
Yeah, but Elm Street is looking fabulous, don't you think?
Looking much better.
Haven't gone down.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Avoided that area. And then so next week, Henry, Officer Henry's gonna be talking to the fifth and sixth graders about responsibility, which is the Penbrook theme of the month. Um, and on Thursday and Friday, Alice Training for Students for Penbrook Students will take place.
Okay.
On Wednesday.
They've gotta train the kids who didn't have it.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, at Georgetown Middle High School's C V S Pharmacy is going to make a presentation with Officer Henry. Uh, to speak to the students about opioid dangers of, of opioids and addictions and how people find themselves in this situation. Um, best practices to avoid that situations. Um, the time for that presentation will be nine fifty to ten forty-five A M for the high school and ten forty-five A M to eleven thirty for the middle school. The twenty, I presume the parents will be invited to it like they were to the social media presentation?
Can come, but.
I, I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know that for a fact yet, that's. Okay, great.
That's it? Was, did I cover?
Yeah, well, the other thing briefly we talked about was the meeting last night on the use, on the survey.
Oh.
Yeah, just to debrief a little bit on that, that's what we, we talked a little bit about that.
Okay. Um, budget and finance, we're meeting on Tuesday?
We just wanna be sure also that, you know, when parents are considering these surveys, that they're looking at the right survey and not. The wrong survey.
Yeah, there might be something on Facebook that's, yeah.
Up on Facebook and it's not.
Well, we urge people to go to the schools, 'cause that's where the, the actual survey is that will be distributed to the students, so.
More than willing to sit with anybody and, you know, go through the, go through the questions, because the, the students. At the youth risk behavior survey is different than the assets and behavior survey. The stu- that, that risk survey is all about risky behaviors. This is demographic information, asset information, like what supports do kids have in place, and then there clearly are some questions around. Um, risk behaviors. But I do wanna reiterate again, if people have any questions or concerns, to really just reach out to the school and it is not a hard sell. If people do not want their children to take the, the thing, all they have to do is drop an email or complete the paper that Margaret attached to her email. It, it, it shouldn't be causing people angst, you know, um, and I, I do think that one of the nice things, I think I might've said at the email that came out of that. Was that, um, you know, there was discussion about it, you know, what happens at the end of the survey? Like, do, you know, kids walk away and, you know, maybe have discussions on their own or whatever, but how do you close the loop a little bit? And, you know, the discussion was that there would be a script written for teachers that basically would, um, the teachers would, would. Uh, let the kids know that if there was anything that they feel that they weren't, they weren't comfortable about or that they wanna talk more about, here are. All the people that they could, should, should feel free to, uh, talk to about. Henry told me that after the session that he did, uh, the other day, there were some kids, you know, who approached him after to, to talk. To get clarification, a little more questions about the, the sexting, for example, like some things that he said that they wanted to make sure that they really. You know, understood. So, I mean, that, that's the goal, right, is that you want to have the kids see people as helpful and useful. Not something that, you know, they get information from people who really don't, can't really help them.
Right.
So I thought that was a really positive thing that came out of the meeting with the, the parents that were there and the staff that were there last night.
So how was the turnout?
Well, there were only three parents that came and then Elizabeth Carroll was there, I was there, Tina from, um. Tina Lass was there, um, and, uh, Margaret, Margaret was there and. Who am I? I think that's it. Um, so, you know, we had a cozy little, you know, meeting around the round cafeteria table. But, uh, you know, I think the, the discussion was good. I think the things that came out of it were, were good. Nothing that you, nothing that you didn't say. And we didn't feel when we were looking at it for the first time, you know, people could see the value of what the data could, could bring. But it was kind of like just hard for me to imagine that my kid's gonna take it, you know, like, and what about the conversation that I don't really wanna have right now? It's, I'm not re- I don't think my child's ready for it. All the things that we talked about, there was no surprises. Um, but, you know, the fact that we, you give people the, the opportunity to talk about it, I think is the value of it.
Definitely, and people can still.
Oh, yeah, people can still, yeah, absolutely, we want that.
If they have questions or concerns.
Somebody said on the Facebook page today, there was, those were suggest, some, I didn't see it, but people said there were some suggestions on there, you know. Go see, go, go to the school and look at the survey if you have any questions.
Call the school.
But I think the survey that's posted is a little misleading because it is not the assets and behavior survey.
Right, survey.
So it would be, like, for example, there was something, some.
They talked about the words freebasing.
Freebasing, I mean, I, I've looked at the survey, I can't find that, but it may be in the youth risk behavior survey.
Yeah.
'Cause it is a different survey. So, just really encourage people to, you know, go to the school and, and, and get the information, 'cause we're very happy to talk to them.
Okay, um, governance.
We have met.
We have met and we are working diligently on the travel, uh, field trip. Policy and we should be bringing that to the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yep, yep.
Uh, negotiations?
We're meeting next week.
Next week.
So that, that's a, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're starting to start.
Starting to start.
Public relations?
We have not met.
No, we have not met, no.
But we have a meeting sched- there, I think.
There is schedule.
Yeah.
Um, the end of this month, I feel like.
Right, it's, I think it's on the bottom of the agenda. Did, I think I tried to pull those in.
What about superintendent evaluation?
Um, we have not done that, but we have to get a time.
Not done that.
I have written a note here, get a meeting with Sharon.
Right.
Suzanne, we need Suzanne.
Right.
So I can put something out.
Right, 'cause we started a doodle with Laura.
I know with Laura, but I can't find any of that stuff, but that's all right. Uh, just like I made the other appointments. I'll send you guys out some times. I know Suzanne probably should do it after school, so.
Well, actually, she did say she was available after eleven thirty on Fridays.
Oh, she is, okay, okay. Is that, does, does that work for you on Fridays?
Yep.
Okay, okay, let's try that. Maybe we can shoot for next Friday. Not tomorrow, obviously, but.
Right.
No question.
The, I was just gonna say very briefly, C I P met last night. Um, in good news, there is money theoretically for this year, looking at up to about three hundred thousand dollars. The problem is, is we didn't fund, essentially we didn't fund any projects for the last two years. So there's lots and lots of demands and, and stuff has been rearranged, um, but. There could possibly be money available.
That's great.
So when's the next meeting?
Uh, we are meeting next week and then schools, assuming Mike is available presenting November twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, yep, yep, I spoke to him today.
The list that Mike handed out at Department Head.
Yeah, that was.
Is that, is that an old list or that's the list that these guys are talking about?
No, it's, it's a different list. He had a different list last.
Because, 'cause I was thinking it didn't represent the priorities that you, you all had talked about.
There was a pretty clear indication last night that the TRIM project would not.
Fly.
Fly. It needs to be, there's, there's a pretty strong consensus that, that it is a, it is a project that should and or.
It's a historic building.
Be funded by CPC because it is not.
We have a date with CPC. We, we, it went through, the CPC, we submitted, I think I put it in here.
Yeah.
Was it in there or did, I just saw the windows, I thought, in, in whatever was in our.
You know what?
I think.
It is the windows in here, but.
Windows, but he was gonna try to update it with the TRIM.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, yeah.
Spoke to him today about that.
Yeah.
It was a pretty clear indication.
Well, well, actually, they funded it once. They, they.
CPC did.
CPC funded it once, I think they would fund it again.
Well, that's good.
Good.
But, but, so we still, we still had the.
So there's still the TRIM and the truck.
The truck, okay.
All right, okay. All right, I think that's it. Uh, I do wanna just remind people that at eleven o'clock, um, eleven A M on Saturday, they're having a Veterans Day. Um, celebration, memorial at Ha- uh, Harry March Park. I know it's always a, a very nice, um. Reminder to all of us as to why we celebrate this day. It's very special, so I urge people to go. You know, the selectmen, I'll go, there's some veterans there that are always so happy to see the kids and people show up. It's gonna be chilly on Saturday, so I would definitely dress warm, but eleven A M at Harry March Park. Um. Anybody have any? I know the P T A auction, can still talk about that, November eighteenth.
Yes, it's, um, coming together, all the little pieces.
I've seen some pictures on Facebook, really awesome project.
There are only two or three properties left on the Monopoly.
Yeah, I saw that, that's great.
Sponsorships and buy your tickets, buy your tickets. It's gonna be a fun night.
Will be fun.
Will be fun.
Good. Okay, uh, there is no need to have an executive session. Uh, I don't need to vote to end the meeting. Uh, but we are going to sign off at nine twenty-eight P M. I wish everyone a happy, safe, long weekend. Thank you.